So it's a little after seven, we should probably call the meeting to order. This is the planning commission meeting of the city of Royal Oak. I need a roll call, so I'll need each planning commissioner to identify themselves. Starting with the mayor.
Hi, Mayor Mike Fournier, present.
Okay.
Eric Klooster, present as well.
Okay.
Gary Casada.
Okay.
Why don't you call off our names and we'll say present.
Charlene Douglas.
Present.
Woody Gantina.
Present.
Ann Beeky.
Present.
Okay. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? A motion by Mr. Gantina, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster, is there any discussion?
I saw a request by email about potentially postponing item. Which item was it? And Tim, maybe can clarify, there was the request to potentially postpone item number.
Yeah, we'll get into that in a minute.
Oh, okay, well, that's regarding the agenda, so. Anyway, that was, we won.
Okay, so the agenda's been approved? Okay. Um, moving on to item D, this is.
And we need to do a roll call vote on that, on everything.
Okay, so I'm gonna need to, there's been a motion by Mr. Gantina in support of my Mr. Klooster. And we'll have to do a roll call vote on the approval of the agenda. Mr. Fournier, Mayor.
I vote yes.
Mr. Klooster.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina.
Yes.
Ms. Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Casada.
Yes.
Ms. Beeky.
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda's been approved. Um, moving on to item D. Uh, the approval of minutes for February 11th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Ms. Douglas, is there a support? Support by Ms. Beeky. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Okay, not seeing any, we'll need to call for a roll call on the approval. Mayor Fournier?
I vote yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Beeky?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion's been approved. Okay. Uh, next is item E, public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Twing, is there any, do we need to make any statement on this?
Yeah, can I, just a couple of items in regards to the agenda. In terms of public comment, you would see at the beginning of the agenda, that public comment was allowed by phone calls yesterday between noon and three. We did receive some phone calls, and those were all related to item six. I believe that it's item six. Yes. And so we will play those 23 phone calls when that item comes up. We'll follow a normal protocol in terms of staff giving an overview of the case. The petitioner then being able to present their case. And then if there's any further discussion, it'll be back in front of the board. I would point out, all of the other public comments that we received are attached to the end of each case that received those. So if there were emails or letters or written communications, we put all of those at the end of the report. The only ones that we're gonna have to play voicemail messages for will be the 23 that were received as part of jewelry store slash pawn shop, and again, we'll play those at that time. We did not receive any public comment on non-agenda items, so you don't have any here. The other thing I would point out is, we have received a request from the petitioners of two cases. Item three under new business, 1006 East 11 Mile has asked for their case to be postponed. I would recommend if the planning commission agrees to postpone it until next month. Their indication was they'd like to have it postponed until there's a face-to-face meeting. I don't know when that's going to occur. If we just pull it off the agenda, I have to charge them a new fee and a and redo the notices at a future date, so we can talk about that there, but that was one request. The second request for a postponement was item one under other business, the sign variance request from 110 East Second Street. They have also asked to be delayed to a future meeting. And again, I would suggest that just be to the next meeting. As I said earlier, we did receive 23 voicemail messages. And we also received one email from City Commissioner indicating he's got indications from parties calling him that they were objecting to the way public comment is done or was done for this meeting. What I would point out is, public comment for this meeting is the same fashion that's been used for all other city meetings with the opportunity to submit written as well as phone calls during a time slot. We had a three-hour time slot, and with 22 calls, it was time. The time slot was set based on when other meetings were occurring and when that could happen, so. My understanding, there's nothing wrong with the way the procedure was done or has been done for this meeting, any different than it's been done for other city meetings, the city commission meetings and/or the DDA meetings that I've been involved in, so. Whether you choose to delay item six because of that, or have more input on it, is totally up to the planning commission. With that, I will stop with my announcements. And I do have one gentleman in the waiting room, John Ambro, and I have no indication of what case he is on. So I don't plan to let him in unless somebody tells me who he's with.
Hi, Tim, this is Eric Williams with Stonefield for the first line of new business here, and he's actually the project architect. Would you be able to let him in?
All right.
Sorry about that.
Nope, I just didn't have him on my list.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Okay, if nothing else, moving on to F is on new business. This is a site plan. It's 20-303-05. It's to convert the veterinary hospital into a physical therapy office at 32934 Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing.
Hopefully, everyone can see my shared screen. As Chairman Vara indicated, this is a request to convert what used to be the veterinary hospital at that address, which is just north of Berkshire.
Hearing, so they're gonna be playing the public comment when they open each public hearing?
Yes.
That makes sense?
That's when we're playing them.
Hello?
Um. The petitioner is also making a small addition to the back of the building. There's currently a few parking spaces. It's probably most evident on the survey sheet. The gray area is a small addition to the facility. The total of the building, when it is completed, would be roughly 5,970 square feet. It would have a usable square footage as calculated by staff of 5,930. They would require 26 parking spaces in that regard. The accessory parking lot that's just to the east across the alley contains a total of 23. So you will see in the first line or the first contingency of site plan report that they would need zoning board appeals action to waive those three spaces. The second item under the staff review is, there is a setback requirement that can be addressed by the planning commission for the rear yard setback. Basically, the zoning ordinance states that 25 feet from the center line of the alley. In this case, it's roughly 10.3. That is a planning commission discretionary item, so you can deal with that today, is, that's why item two is there. Item three is simply in regards to landscaping. Again, this is a discretionary item from the planning commission as to whether there's an opportunity to provide landscaping or not on the site plan. Item four is in regards that all exterior waste and recyclable receptacles are required to be screened by the zoning ordinance with a six-foot masonry wall and fence. The location is proposed by the petitioner is in the accessory parking lot and does not indicate any enclosure around it. The ordinance does require it in terms of screening any sort of exterior refuge. Staff has suggested that they make a room in the building itself with a roll-up door. Their proposal is to put it back in the accessory parking lot area. All of the other contingencies, five, six, seven, eight, and nine are standard contingencies regarding public rights of way, engineering, issues, lighting, and signage. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Do we have any questions for Mr. Twing? Ms. Douglas?
Mr. Twing, the item number two, the setback question, would you flesh that out a little bit more? I'm trying to visualize what the setbacks are from and to.
If you can look at the screen in my shared window where I have the pointer, the center line of the alley, the ordinance talks about a suggested setback from there of 25 feet. The petitioner has indicated where that line is on their site plan. And they're proposing that their building go almost to the property line, so that it would have a 10-foot-three setback from the center line. That setback is only a statement when developments are adjacent to one-family residential zoning across an alley. This parking lot that's associated with the development is actually in a one-family residential zone. It was an approved residential accessory parking lot with the prior use, but it is zoned one-family residential, so that's why that provision is even referenced.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twing? Okay, not seeing any. Does the petitioner have anything to add to Mr. Twing's presentation?
I believe we have three that are on the call today, Eric Williams.
Okay.
John Ambro, and somebody's name that is Barbette.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, so Mr. Williams, are you, are you the spokesperson?
Yes, ma'am, I'll lead the charge. So I know, I know, Tim gave us a little overview here, so I don't wanna take too long, but I would like to just, you know, run through it one more time. So my name's Eric Williams, I work for Stonefield Engineering and Design. My address is 607 Shelby Street, Suite 200, Detroit, Michigan. We're here representing the applicant, R O Investments LLC. As Mr. Twing stated, Dwayne Barbette, the developer and property owner, is here along with John Ambro of Ambro Design Group, the project architect. So again, as he mentioned, we're here seeking site plan approval of the proposed physical therapy clinic that's located within the Hartrick Veterinary Office. We are obviously including the accessory parking area that was stated before. And with that being said, I think we can just briefly talk about the uses surrounding the proposed medical office. So the entire block of the Woodward corridor here is zone general business, which is what our property is zoned. A few of the notable users are Al's Deli, Wingstop, Custard &amp; Co., and then obviously a handful of other users. To the west, we have, you know, additional general business zoning. I think the one other note to make about the zoning is that the the accessory parking lot is within the single-family residential district and serves as a nice buffer between the commercial corridor of Woodward and the single-family residents that extend east down Berkshire. With that being said, the proposal is the 5,970 square foot physical therapy center, and this is actually a relocation of an existing user. So whoever's familiar with the area, I'm sure everybody is, Team Rehab is located at 4245 West 14 Mile, which is the three parcels directly north of the accessory parking lot. And so they are actually be the tenant at this particular location, assuming that, you know, we can gain all of our approvals. So obviously, as Mr. Twing noted, one of the items in question here is the number of parking spaces required. So there is a parking lot out there today, it's not too clearly striped, so we do plan to make some improvements in terms of striping. And then I think most notably circulation, I believe there is some, it was an old fence line at one point that extends from the northern entrance to the parking lot and moves south, and those fence posts, you know, we're gonna remove them. And then re-stripe the lot to get some better circulation through it, so there's no dead-end parking as it exists today. And in terms of kind of our deviation here, there is the ability for an administrative waiver of up to 10% for a parking reduction, and in this case, you know, we're talking about a one and a half percent in excess of that 10% or 0.4 spaces. So, you know, it's really a small fraction of what's required. And the other notable thing is that there is 26 parking spaces open for public use along Woodward, while those can't be counted towards our requirement. If you look at just even the area within the frontage, the immediate frontage of the building, I believe there's six spaces that are available, so obviously, there is parking available. And the other item to note is that the big users on this particular block, as I kind of stated before, is the Al's Deli and the Wingstop. And those users' peak hour is gonna be the PM and the afternoon hours, whereas our physical therapy clinic is gonna see a peak in the AM hour. So we would actually see some nice complimentary uses in terms of the parking available. I think, you know, unfortunately for the Woodward corridor, this is a pretty common topic of discussion in terms of parking and being able to provide enough parking for users that are located immediately along Woodward. As Mr. Twing said, we do, we are requesting a waiver for the 25-foot setback. And really, the thought here is that the ordinance talks about being adjacent to single-family residential lots, and in this case, we are, but the nature and the actual use of that particular parcel is obviously the accessory parking lot. So we feel that that provides sufficient buffer that, you know, the 25-foot setback is meant to provide. In terms of the dumpster enclosure, we do understand that that needs to be enclosed within a masonry structure. So I think the intent here is, we've striped out the area in the northwest corner, and what we'll do is work with John and coming up with a, you know, aesthetically a pleasing design. I know, you know, these alleyways are oftentimes strewn with empty garbage containers and dumpsters that kind of float, float around. So we kind of, we understand the request from the city there. In terms of site lighting, we are proposing two security wall packs on the eastern facade. These will be mounted at 14 feet, and they'll be full cutoff fixtures, so we don't anticipate any negative impact to occur on the residents east of the parking area. It's really meant to illuminate the alley and the parking, the immediate parking area. And then, again, just touching on some of the tenant operations, the existing building is about 5,400 square feet. Hours of operation are Monday to Thursday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. You know, in discussions with the team at, or the folks at Team Rehab, they're still working on their COVID response, so those hours may obviously vary a little bit, but that's generally the schedule they intend to keep. And if you've had a chance to review the floor plan, there is 14 treatment beds proposed within the new building and three private treatment rooms, and this is actually less than what they are seeing at the current facility. They actually have 18 treatment beds. So really, they're looking for improvements in terms of the actual facility itself and the visibility that the Woodward corridor would bring them. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ambro and let him, let him walk you guys through the architectural design.
Hello, everyone, my name is John Ambro with Everzine Group, so make sure, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, so John Ambro with Everzine Group, based out of Farming Hills, Michigan, 30600 Northwestern Highway, Suite 310. So the building is obviously a single-story. The front facade, which is kind of Woodward corridor, has the taller, enlarged glass grate for aesthetically looking building, kind of seen into the space itself. You know, there's access from the Woodward as well as from the alley, which we consider the parking, majority of parking itself. And the building is made up of brick, sea bricks, there's some metal panel, a lot of the newer materials a lot of people are using right now in the retail design as well as medical. So the front entrance does have a different color shade, kind of representing the front entrance of the building. Even the rear material of building where the alley faces, it would be the same materials as well. And as I mentioned, the east elevation will see that there is an entrance, single-door entrance to the, to the space. We have not determined, so again, we have provided interior floor plans, but in regards to finishes, those are obviously to a later date for Building Department. Let me know if you have any questions regarding the exterior or the interiors itself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ambro. Any, anything else, Mr. Williams, or should we turn it over to the planning commission for questions?
I think the only other thing that Mr. Twing already stated is that we will be going to the ZBA, and that's scheduled for Thursday of this week, so.
Okay.
We're hoping we can obviously gain their approval and keep the project forward. We're, you know, we're excited to see this go up, and I think it'll be a great improvement to, you know, that block. And hopefully, you know, it's kind of a taste of things to come for the corridor.
Thank you. Okay, questions for the petitioners? You'll have to raise your hand. Is that Mr. Casada?
Yep, that's all I'll do.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
I wanna ask about the lights that you talked about, there's gonna be a couple of pole lights, you say? But you said, you call them security packs, tell me about this lighting.
So, so the lights, there will be no, there's no light poles currently existing within that parking area. We don't intend to install any additional fixtures. So I believe they're denoted on this plan, there are the two, I can't see the, yep, down to the right. Central, it's kind of centrally located on the building there. Exactly, those two fixtures right there. So they'll be located, they'll be mounted at 14 feet above grade, and, you know, they'll have a full cutoff style to them, so there's no light being emitted above that 90-degree angle. And with the distance from our building facade to that six-foot screening fence located at the eastern edge of the property, there's, you know, at grade, we're seeing zero-foot candles, so really, there's no, there's no anticipated impact in that area.
Okay, you did some sort of a study to show that the light will not.
Correct. On sheet C4, there is our photometric plan that shows shows the parking area. And I apologize if these values are a little hard to see here, but they are. They're there.
Anything else, Mr. Casada?
Tim, I just, the contingencies that comply with the ordinance, I was trying to look up the ordinance real quick, but this complies in your understanding? Yes, generally, if it didn't, we would raise it as an issue in the report. All right, these are LEDs, I take it?
Correct. All right, if you look just, sorry, on the right side of the screen, Tim, there is a spec or a cut sheet of what this fixture would look like.
All right, you understand, just to express my concern, is a lot of these LED lights, especially on the buildings that are, have a horizontal, a lot of the spread is horizontal, they're very bright, they're very glaring, they're too bright, they're brighter than they need to be. And I think you're shooting at, across at a residential area there. So I just wanna make sure they comply with their ordinances and are respectful to the neighbors and don't, don't create a nuisance.
Absolutely, and we can, you know, we can double, we can circle back with the planning department and, you know, any additional information they would require, we can, you know, we'll work with them to make sure there's no issues.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casada. Any other questions for the petitioner? Mr. Gantina?
So I had a question regarding the building setback in the alley. That the proposed structure is not quite to, but basically up to the alley. I was curious how far back from the alley that was, and then also, if you're aware of any other, you mentioned no light poles in that parking lot, but are there any other obstructions, ballers, anything like that, on the opposite side of that alley that, that might pose an impediment to a vehicle traveling down or, you know, in some other ways, sort of skinny down that access?
So in terms of the setbacks, so the, the building will be more or less on that property line. There's some small undulations in the facade that, you know, kind of set it back a half a foot, you know, and it'll butt to the property line. So more or less, we plan to have it located directly on the property line, for, for lack of a better description. In terms of additional obstructions within the alley, there is a handful of overhead utility poles that are located up and down that alley. There is one that I know of for sure at the northwest corner that is basically at the point of our property lines that is located directly to the left of that. The one thing that, that may impact is obviously the trashed enclosure functionality, but we don't anticipate it to actually be a hindrance. And that's the only other item that, that we've seen in our visits to the site.
And then last question would be, if you had studied pulling that building back from the property line a little bit from a safety standpoint, because I'm looking, it appears that, that maybe there's a rear entrance that's proposed there. I've got a concern that that's opening right onto the alley. And with vehicular traffic going through that alley, it seems like there's potential for visibility issues and pedestrians coming out that door, coming into conflict with vehicles.
Absolutely. So I think the first thing I'd say is that that, that will be recessed into, you know, you're not gonna be able to push that door out into the alleyway. The second item that I would add is, there is, if you look at the eastern elevation, there are windows at this particular area. It kind of, it, the thing here is that it does kind of serve as the main entryway, and that's if you see on the floor plan itself, that is where the waiting room for, you know, the administrative happenings occur. So there are windows there that would allow people to see out into that alleyway. I think the other thing is, you know, traffic along these alleys is, you know, moving at a slower rate of speed, so people would be able to, you know, obviously, look out and make sure that there is no, no oncoming traffic.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
I would like to add to Eric's point was that, yeah, so there's a vestibule at the east elevation, so a vestibule does kind of bring that slowing, you know, stopping or slowing point for people entering or even exiting. So to that point, you kind of, you know, from the hallway or the lobby area, you're kind of entering the vestibule, so it kind of puts your person more at ease where you open the door to kind of look through the window and seeing cars driving by, so. So it kind of puts your person more at ease where you open the door to kind of look through the window and, and seeing cars, uh, driving by. So that was my, to my point.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Beaky?
Um, while many, most of the people who would arrive will likely come by automobile, if people from the neighborhood arrive or someone were to come from a bus or, or want to arrive by foot or bike, how are their access points if they would have to walk through the parking lot or come in? What would be their, uh, access points? Not arriving by car?
Um, so I, I guess, I'm not sure I quite follow the question, but we do have two access points, one from the rear alley and one from the Woodward Avenue side. Um, in terms of residents, there is a sidewalk that extends along Berkshire. Um, eat going east and west, and then obviously the sidewalk that runs north, south along Woodward. Um, so any of those sidewalks could be utilized by a pedestrian to gain access to the site. Um, I guess I'm not sure if I'm missing more to what you're asking or?
Often, often the parking lots and some of the walls that get put in while they're good for shielding the light, they also make it hard for people to access on foot. So I was just wondering if there were places for people to walk through if they didn't actually drive into. But I see now that there's a front door, but we were talking about the rear door previously.
Correct. And then I think the one thing, you know, that, that the tenant may even be interested in, we'd have to take up with, with, um, the city engineering department is maybe we can install, um, pedestrian crossing signs or, you know, some sort of striping and delineation to ensure that people are aware. I know the issue is always, once it gets installed, who maintains it? And so if, you know, th- there are options like that, but it's not, I, I haven't seen it commonly used throughout Royal Oak, but that could be another option if, if, you know, you're slightly concerned about how people are getting in and out of this particular location.
Anything else, Ms. Beaky?
I guess I'll ask also, uh, I don't see anything as far as, you know, Royal Oak's very well known for its green spaces and green trees. And do you have any, uh, green on this li- place in the parking lot or?
So along the southern roadway, I think this was one of the, the conditions. I don't, let me see what number it was. I believe it was. Number three within the staff report. So there is a small green area that Mr. Twing's highlighting here. And currently this is, this is grass that's maintained with deciduous shrubs. And then actually two fairly large, I believe they're measured at eighteen inches, DBH or, um, diameter at breast height trees. So there is some substantial greenery in that particular area. And we are making an effort to maintain it as is, so that it serves as a nice buffer between, you know, people walking their dog or, you know, the residents that actually live at that particular location directly to the east. It, it kind of creates a nice entryway into the residential district.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion? Ms. Douglas?
Uh, yes, Mayor Chair, I will move approval of the, um, site plan as proposed with the nine, um, uh, bullet points.
Okay, is there a second?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, not seeing any hands. I'm going to call for the roll call vote, starting with Mr. Casada.
Yes.
Mr. Guntina?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, this says, uh, site plan is approved.
Thank you everyone. Together.
Lot.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, next on our agenda is also a site plan. This is twenty dash zero six dash zero nine. It's to reconstruct off-street parking lots for senior housing residents Royal Oak Manor at six zero six South Williams Street. Mr. Twing?
Um, as you indicated, it's a simple reconstruction of two parking lots uh, that are related to the Royal Oak Manor on South Williams. Uh, both are located within the central business district and serve, uh, the Royal Oak Manor. The existing lot one, which is west of the Royal Oak Manor has sixty-seven parking spots in it. Uh, the proposal would raise that number to seventy-one. Uh, their proposal for lot two, which is on the east side of Williams Street, uh, would go from forty-three parking spaces to forty-eight. Uh, they're also doing some site work in terms of landscaping and revising their landscape plan. Uh, so you will note that, uh, the planning department's contingencies simply relate to, uh, item one, whether those proposed landscaping and item two in regards to screening are sufficient in the eyes of the, uh, planning commission under this site plan. The remaining items, uh, three, four, five and six are, seven are standard contingencies regarding site plans.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing?
And I do believe we have two representatives, uh, here, James Downing and Jason Steinhebel, I think. Beat that last name up.
Okay, I think I saw the mayor's hand.
Yeah, I just, you know, there's mention of the, the tree situation and, you know, my eyes are getting really old. You kind of walk through or maybe the petitioner can walk through what the tree plan is, which trees will be removed and which ones would be put in the place. And so the, um, commission has a better understanding about that.
I'll let them walk through their, their plan so they can present it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Twing before we get to the petitioner? Okay, not seeing it is, Mr. Downing, is, are you the spokesperson?
I am. Uh, good afternoon, commission. Uh, thank you for inviting me, uh, to join you today. Uh, my name is James Downing. I'm a senior project manager with CSI Support and Development. Uh, for those of you who are unfamiliar with CSI, we are a owner, developer and manager of affordable housing for seniors. Um, we've been a member of the Royal Oak community at the site since nineteen seventy-four, when we constructed Royal Oak Manor. Uh, it's a two hundred and forty-three unit building, um, that has been managed since it was constructed for low-income senior citizens. We are embarking on a, a substantial rehab of this project. We, um, have raised, uh, seven point two million dollars to, uh, rehab the building. Um, and it will be maintained as affordable housing in perpetuity. The most expensive unit in the building will be, uh, five hundred and fifty dollars, so well below, uh, market rents. As you can probably surmise from the limited nature of our site plan, we are, um, spending the vast majority of that money on the building itself and in renovating the units. The way we are conceptualizing the site plan is, um, effectively we are, um, repairing, um, and maintaining, uh, the site and more or less its existing condition. Um, we'll be doing some restriping and, um, resurfacing of the, uh, parking area and removing some, uh, landscaping trees, mainly pines along the west side of the building that are well overgrown, um, for their site and replacing them with something that is more, uh, we think scaled to the side, scaled to the side and be an aesthetic improvement. Um, so a note on the parking, um, parking at our building is at an extreme premium. Um, we're two hundred and forty units and we currently have a hundred and eight spaces. Um, so we're really fighting for every inch of parking, um, to serve our low-income senior residents. Uh, we currently have a, all of our sites are, all of our parking spots are assigned. Uh, but we currently have a waiting list of thirty spaces. Um, so we engage with our residents to, uh, encourage people to, um, make do without a car. Uh, we'll be purchasing a van, um, out of our developer fee to, uh, assist people without vehicles, uh, to be mobile around Royal Oak. Uh, we encourage our residents to enjoy Royal Oak's, um, really excellent walkability, uh, much, much more walkable area than most of our properties. Um, but that said, there is a real need for parking. We have, um, as I said, a hundred and eight spaces for two hundred and forty units. Um, so, uh, I'll request that as we discuss the site plan, um, the city, uh, planning commission, keep in mind our, our real acute need for parking. Um, to the mayor's question, uh, we're joined by our architects, Jason Steinhebel. Um, Jason, could you walk through in more detail what trees were, um, discussing or moving and what we'll be replacing them with?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Uh, my name is Jason Steinhebel. I'm with Peaceco Schaefer Pampas Architects, where we located, uh, just about a mile south in Farnell. Um, majority of the trees that we're touching is on the west side of the building. There's some pines that have gotten quite large, uh, they really filled in the space. They're blocking the building unit windows, um, as well as a few on the corners of the parking lot, uh, the northwest. And, uh, there is one at the southeast corner of the parking lot as well. So our mindset, uh, with the landscaping is just to remove anything overgrown, uh, replace it with something more appropriate, uh, kind of just clean up the look and, uh, modernize it, use more contemporary plantings, um, just to clean up that facade. And, uh, we're kind of limited, uh, with the green area around the building. Um, but we're, we're taking some opportunities also to improve some of the, uh, the planting beds on the corners, cleaning up the shrubbery and adding some landscaping to that as well.
Okay, so when I go to Google Maps here, basically the whole west side of the building, I see the, you know, the overgrown pine in the corner. Uh, and then I see across the front of the building, basically looks like it's one tree, but it's really three trees. I see right there kind of clustered together. That's where, I think I read nine trees. Is that nine that, and there's like an arbor vady or something that you're going to remove, I think, over here?
Yes, we're looking at about nine trees to remove and, uh, believe we're replacing them with ten. Ten new trees.
Any other questions for the petitioner?
Sorry, I have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry. I just thought of it just as you said that.
Okay.
Can you remind us again, and I apologize, long night last night as well? Um, the, with the restriping and, and reconditioning of the parking lots, how many additional spots are you going to be able to gain? Go from a hundred and eight to what? Or is a hundred and eight the new number?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, our, our new number would be a hundred and sixty-three total between the two lots. Um, and the plan for the lot is we're going to mill, mill off the top two inches and resurface it. And then restripe. And, uh, during that resurfacing, we're able to manipulate the, uh, the striping, uh, and make it more efficient to gain a few more spots.
How many are you gaining going from one to what?
Um, I believe we're about a hundred and eight and we're getting James, was that, uh, a hundred and eight, uh, and you're just one lot that you had counted?
Uh, according to the parking calculation that I have up, at least what it says on the drawing, sheet one, uh, SP one says there's sixty-seven existing in lot one. Which six are barrier free, posing seventy-one, four are barrier free. Lot two, existing forty-three and proposing forty-eight. So existing a hundred and ten, posed a hundred and nineteen.
Yeah, so about nine increase. Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Uh, uh, gentlemen, um, as I understand it right now, you're, you do not plan to do anything with the enclosure around parking lot number two. Is that correct? You plan to leave the existing chain link fence there?
That is correct.
And are you doing anything to it?
No, not at this time.
I mean, I, I will observe that, you know, chain link fences don't get any prettier as time goes by. Um, and this would be the chance for us to, um, require something a little more attractive and a little more consistent with code, um, in that, uh, around that parking lot. But I'll bring that up in, when we bring this back to the commission for discussion.
Other questions for the petitioner? Ms. Beaky?
I'm glad to see and I appreciate that you're working on updating this building and the grounds. That's really great. Um, I have a question regarding, um, the interface of, of, do, do people who live in the buildings have to pay extra to have the parking? We all know the high cost of free parking in terms of over demand and I'm curious how that's managed.
So this building, um, was originally built by the HUD two thirty-six program, um, with our, um, refinancing will be, um, so current is subject to HUD approval decisions such as charging for parking. HUD as a matter of policy does not allow, um, for, um, parking to be, uh, a, a fee for parking. Um, that is something we can, we will be outside of HUD's ambit and, um, in our, um, recapitalization of this project, um, post renovation. So, um, looking at a, uh, charge for parking as a way to, um, encourage people doing without vehicles, um, or to, there are some of the costs of parking is something we can, um, we'd be willing to consider.
And, and I wouldn't want to suggest that I want to, especially in a low-income housing situation, to make it overly, uh, excessive. But just again, even, even, even the small fee sometimes makes people make a decision that might be different or share vehicles or those kinds of things. Um, anyway, that's just a general question. Um, the other question I have regarding the landscaping, because again, it is even under our relatively modest, uh, two-for-one, uh, requirement in terms of replacement. Um, and again, I do appreciate that you are investing in the whole property in general. Um, is there any room for, again, getting closer to our two-for-one requirement? And as far as what kinds of, uh, plants are going in, in terms of, uh, plants that are native to the area that are going to be more beneficial in terms of, to the overall community, in terms of not only aesthetic, but also, um, quality of the environment. Uh, we know, again, with our, uh, climate change and such, that we all need to be more, more attentive to those things that we can do that, um, will make that kind of small difference. I see the red buds are Michigan natives. I know that.
Yeah, and I mean, uh, they're right. For, for all the environmental reasons you listed, that, it's, native plantings are important and, uh, for maintenance as well. Uh, plants native to Michigan are, are plants that are easier to maintain in Michigan. Um, I'll let, uh, Jason speak to plant selection, um, in just a moment. In terms of, um, area for additional plantings, um, the, um, you know, a- as I mentioned, we're, we're really fighting for every inch for, uh, for parking. Even with expanded parking, we'll have, um, you know, nearly a hundred, uh, a hundred units that will not be served by parking. So, um, to the extent we and, um, uh, add landscaping, that's something, um, we are willing to explore. Um, and, and willing to do, um, to the extent that we can do so without, um, sacrificing this really much needed parking. Um, with respect to plant selection, Jason, are you, um, could you address that?
Uh, I can address it a little. Um, it's, you know, we used a, a landscape architect to come up with a scheme and, and his assistance with, uh, plant selection. But I, what I can speak to is, uh, we do try to select, uh, native species where we can. And we also take a look at the, uh, the surrounding conditions and also select, um, trees that are adaptable, uh, highly adaptable to Michigan and, um, that would thrive in the areas that they're being planted in, uh, where maybe a Michigan species would, would not do so well in. Um, and as far as the adding, uh, for the two-for-one, we are, we are really tight around the building. Um, I think we've tried to use best practices and our, our layout and plant selection to not overplant the site. Um, I, I think we, if looking at it, uh, into it a little deeper, we could, we could probably find some other areas, to do some additional planting. Um, but I, I, I think what we have done around the building is, is kind of appropriate. But I, I, I think what we have done around the building is, is kind of appropriate and fits in with the, the space available to us.
Ms. Douglas.
So it seems to me that there's an opportunity to add some trees on Williams Street. Sorry, I'm zooming here on Google Maps. On the, on Williams Street at the. What direction is that? At the south end of Williams, on the east side of the street. It looks like there's room to add a couple of trees there. And it seems like you could add a tree on the, on Seventh, on the north side of Seventh Street in the right of way there.
I am clearly seeing where.
Okay, so you're looking at. In front of the parking lot.
Yeah, these would be around parking lot number two. They'd be on the west and south sides of parking lot number two.
Yes, there is some open space there that we could plant some.
So that would help a bit.
Okay.
The parkway, the parkway, right? Between the sidewalk? Just to the west of the sidewalk?
Yeah, the, the green space there. Right, putting them in the right of way. They would then, they would then become city property. But they would, you know, be, be circling or, or framing and enhancing that existing parking lot and adding trees to the street.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any. So. Is it time for a motion? Ms. Douglas.
Well, I'm inclined to ask them to, or to, to make a motion that requires them to replace the. Chain link fence around the second street lot with the kind of screening that our ordinance requires. That is a minimum thirty inch. The options are landscape, green belt, or, or masonry wall. I'm thinking that a masonry wall is the only option there. It looks like there's room for that. In a way that I don't think would affect the number of parking spaces. So, I'll try a motion. So I would move approval of the site plan. With the caveat under number two, that parking lot number two be screened as the city ordinance requires. And item number one, that they be required to add three trees. The appropriate size, at least three trees of the appropriate size along the west and south sides of parking lot number two.
Okay, is there support? Was that Mr. Kloster? Support?
I got beat to it.
Oh, I saw, I'm sorry, I saw Mr. Kloster. Who was it? Who supported that? Mr. Gantina, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's been a motion by Ms. Douglas, supported by Mr. Gantina. Any discussion on that? Mayor.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, I, I'll be supporting it, I guess. You know, with the screening, you know, obviously I'd prefer to see something green as opposed to a masonry wall. I'm not a big fan of the masonry wall screenings. I think it's something we should look at down the road, because they always get backed into, cracked and, and crumbled. And, you know, I don't know that this is, you know, the best spot for it in the heart of downtown. I do think removing the. The chain link fence is appropriate. So I think it looks cagey and. You know, if they're gonna resurface the parking lot anyways, let's get rid of the, the fence there that's out of compliance and put. You know, something in there, a little bit more decorative and appropriate. But like I said, I don't know if the room's there, but certainly would allow for any sort of greenery, shrubs, boxwoods, whatever. Would be considered a green belt in that particular area to, as a compromise, I guess. But I see Commissioner Douglas has her hand up.
Ms. Douglas.
Yeah, I'm only asking that they provide screening as required in the ordinance. If there's room for green materials, and if that's advantageous to them, if it's less costly, I'm fine with that. But I, I do want to see the chain link fence replaced in any way that is appropriate, again, based on our ordinance.
So there's been a motion and support. Any further discussion? So I, I have a question regarding that. I, I, I'm going to support this also, because I like the chain link fence removed. A question I have maybe for Mr. Twing is there's a, there's a black wrought iron fence that's around the other part of the parking lot. Is that, is that in compliance with the, the city requirements for screening?
I'm not sure. I don't have enough detail, and I don't have Google Earth up on me right now to see where you're referencing.
If you look at it, there are boxwoods that are behind the, it looks like boxwoods. But there is shrubbery behind the black fence, at least on the west side of the property.
Right, and my question was, is the black, the black fence looks much nicer than the wrought iron, and I just, excuse me, the chain link. I was just wondering if, if that's in compliance. It may not be, I don't know. So that, that's okay. There's been a motion and support, Mr. Kloster.
Yes, my understanding is that the, the fence itself is not providing the ordinance required screening. But the landscape buffer potentially is.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, that's, oh, Mr. Gantina.
Well, I just want to, I think Mr. Downing was trying to speak earlier to maybe respond to a comment, so I just want to make sure that he gets the opportunity to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up, Mr. Downing.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I. Apologize if I waited too long till after the, the, the motion was made to make this comment. I, I was going to volunteer. As you did, Ms. Barra, the, the. The black aluminum fence that surrounds the, our main parking lot as a potential alternative. The, I guess my concern with a block fence is that the, the depth of the. Of the thirty foot or thirty inch brick wall. Require losing parking spaces. And I was gonna volunteer the. Black aluminum fence that surrounds our main parking lot as a potential alternative. If that would be acceptable to the planning commission.
Well, the motion was to maintain compliance with the city. The city requirements, and I'm not sure that that wrought iron or that aluminum fence is. allowable. I think Mr. Twing would have to answer that then.
Oh, the fence is allowable, the, the real, the planning commission has a discretion to determine. What you believe is appropriate to address that provision in the ordinance. So if you determine that the. Black fence, aluminum fence is adequate screening for. Lot number two, then it would be. If you kick it back to staff and the petitioner. It's generally a. They'll propose something and will either accept it. The intent generally under the ordinance would be for along Williams Street, where the headlights shine into the right of way. Would be to have something that blocks the headlights from shining directly out into the right of way. That's the primary purpose of it. It would be along Williams and potentially along Seventh Street. The fencing around the rest of it could be. Anything that they would want to propose.
Okay, Mayor and then Mr. Kloster.
I mean, just two ideas out there. I mean, I'd hate to lose the parking spots there. If they were to put the black aluminum fence, I think I'd be agreeable to that. And then if we really wanted to push it, I, I think the masonry wall there is going to get knocked over and be an eyesore, I mean personally. I would think that, you know, maybe you put reverse parking only, no spots against the fence, I don't know. You know, but, but just a thought there. But I, I think, I mean, that it, to me, if, if the answer is, is that. By putting in those masonry walls, we're gonna lose some parking spots there. I don't know, I think right now, the current situation, the light goes through and, you know, it is the building operator. It's going right into the people proposing the change, you know what I mean? If this were the property that those lights are going into, I'd say, yeah, we gotta put up the screening. But since it's their own building and they manage it, and they have had this condition already, I don't know that it's paramount. So maybe, maybe an amendment's in order, just a, just a thought there.
Ms. Douglas, the maker of the motion?
Yeah, in fact, I've been in that building, and all of the spaces along that part of the building are public spaces, not, not private apartments. So the light issue may be lesser. So I'm gonna make a motion to amend my motion. On item number two, to say that the screening shall either meet the city's ordinance. Or be approved by the city staff.
Okay, is there, so, Mr. Gantina, would, would you support that? You were the earliest supporter.
Yeah, I, I'd support that.
Okay, and then Mr. Kloster had his hand up.
Yes, my, my question was, because there's, I'd say, a robust. Sidewalk and greenscape space adjacent to William Street. What is the opportunity for the petitioner to? Provide landscape screening, you know, at the petitioner's expense, rework that sidewalk and provide landscape screening on. The city-owned property in the right of way, adjacent to their property line.
If I, if I may jump in as a staff member, I would, I would prefer that not occur unless there's a maintenance agreement. Because if it's in the right of way, once it's put in, it would become city. Potentially a city issue to maintain.
Okay, that's, that's fair. Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Twing. Yes, I, I would, I would say that I, I would still think that some form of screening. Per the ordinance requirements, so that we don't have headlights shining directly into a building, or directly into pedestrians that are walking along. The, the thoroughfare there on William Street. And so, however the petitioner is able to accommodate that. I think, you know, finding the appropriate screening is necessary.
Any other questions or any other discussion? Sorry, Mr. Casada and then Mr. Gantina.
I, I just, this is more, maybe it's a procedural question, but are we allowed to delegate? That decision to, to staff? Do we have to, and I just sort of directed towards temp. Don't we have to, if we're gonna do that, don't we have to tell the department what is acceptable? For instance, we, we could say. The aluminum black fence would be acceptable, other, anything that conforms with the ordinance would be acceptable. But can we just delegate and say whatever you, whatever you accept? I, I'm not sure we can do that, can we?
I'm very comfortable with it. I think I get the intent of it. I would think the fence along Williams and Seventh potentially could be the black aluminum fence. With the slats a little closer together to block the headlights. And it could be very decorative. You know, I, I agree with Mayor Fournair that I think trying to put a masonry wall in here. Would impact. The number of parking spots they're trying to gain, and they do get. Run into considerably. So I would think some other type of fencing with. Narrow slats in it would meet the objective. I don't think you can put plant material in here, because it would take much more space. But I'm comfortable with deferring it to staff. You've done that quite a few times in the past.
Okay, thanks, that was my question.
Mr. Gantina?
So, yeah, I just simply want to state, you know, I agree with Mr. Kloster. I'd like to see some sort of screening on that west and south. Side of parking lot two as well, that visually screens headlights and things. But the other thing I wanted to point out, in looking at the Google Earth image here, where the parking curves. Within each of the individual parking spaces are, if you look at where that's located and where that current fence line is located. I believe there may be an opportunity to replicate what is the, the black aluminum fence and the shrubbery that we're talking about on the William, the other side. Potentially the opportunity to do the same thing. Lot two, again, on the west and the south side, without necessarily losing spaces. So I guess I just wanted to get out of the, that I'd be in support of replicating the, the screening on the other parking lot. On parking lot two on the west and south side.
Thank you, Mr. Gantina. And any other discussion? Okay, not seeing you, then we'll have to call for the roll call vote. I'm gonna start with.
Chairman, Chairman, Chairwoman Bara?
Yes.
For the amendment, right, on the table?
Yes, the motion for number two to screen. To remove the chain link fence and place screening as directed by staff. And that was supported by Mr. Gantina. Uh, Mr. Casada, did you have another question?
I, I just wanted you to repeat the, if somebody could repeat the, the motion, because I want to make sure I knew what it was too.
Okay, and Ms. Douglas, did that honor your motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, oh, Ms. Beaky, did you have your hand up?
I, I just want to also echo that I would feel a little more comfortable with the statement about the replicating or being similar to the other fence. More specifically, because I would hate, for example, it show up be a vinyl fence blocking the lights. My concern is always the aesthetic and the environmental impact. It's a very, very nice walk under those trees and that green space. And so if we're gonna get improvements, I would just like to be sure it's gonna be improvement, because if we showed up with an vinyl fence for the next twenty years. I think that would be almost worse than the current fence. So I'd be, I'd more inclined to be a little bit more specific, that's all. I trust the staff, but if this is on the table, why not get it clear so it's not lost in the discussion later?
Thank you, Ms. Beaky. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, so I'm gonna call the roll call vote, Mr. Casada.
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Kloster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Site plan approved. Congratulations.
Well, we, we still have to do the site plan. We did the amendment, but now we have to do.
Now we have to do the site plan. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the site plan with the amendment already approved? Ms. Douglas?
I think we have the motion on the table though already, which was to approve the site plan with the trees, which now include the amendment. So I don't think we have to put a new motion on the table, am I right, Commissioner Douglas, or?
That's, that's correct. You, you have the original motion on the floor.
Okay. So the amendment is just for number two. Okay, so the, the motion by Ms. Douglas is support by Mr. Gantina to approve the site plan. I'm gonna call the roll call vote, Mayor. Mr. Kloster?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gantina?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Now we're approved. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Thank you very much. We look forward to getting under construction and maintaining Royal Oak Manor to serve the residents. The senior residents of Royal Oak for the, for the next fifty years.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to number three.
And if I could, this is one of the items that we received, a request from the petitioner to postpone until next month. It is a public hearing. Again, all of the public. Uh, it is a public hearing. Uh, again, all of the public comment that we received. Was attached to the end of the agenda on this item. Uh, so we have received public comment on this already. Again, the, the petitioners asked for the conditional rezoning request, uh, to be postponed. Uh, I would recommend if planning commission concurred, a motion to postpone until the July meeting.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to postpone the discussion until July.
Okay, motion by Ms. Beaky. Is there a support?
For some.
For, was that Mr. Casada? Okay. Any discussion on this? Ms. Douglas?
Yes, Mr. Twink said that the petitioner was interested in postponing, uh, a hearing until. This body can meet publicly, and I hesitate to set that precedent, because if we start getting every applicant wanting to wait until we meet live, our live meetings will be, you know, stacked up like cordwood. So I will definitely, I will support the motion only to postpone this for one month.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mr. Gontina?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The conditional rezoning for neighborhood business to mixed use two has been postponed to July. Okay. Next up, uh, this is item number four. This is a public hearing. It's for a special land use and site plan. SP 20 0304 to construct 2,808 square feet. A regulation building and other equipment for natural gas utility consumer energy at 4,600 Coolidge Highway. Mr. Twink?
Uh, you, you really kind of covered the, the whole request from the petitioner. Um, what I would show up on the site plan is really the. Uh, the basic location, if you're familiar with the, uh, Consumers Energy site. It's on the southeast corner of 14 and Coolidge. Uh, it's an existing, uh, lot. It's primarily covered with limestone and. And has other equipment in it. Uh, the petitioner is proposing, uh, that 2,800 square foot building. Approximately in this location. Uh, they are also replacing, uh, other types of, of regulation equipment and, uh. Things to upgrade their, uh, systems. This site is zoned, uh, general industrial and in that district, uh. Public utilities and, uh, are all considered a special land use. And that's why you have, uh, the special land use report and the, uh, public hearing, uh, scheduled for this evening. Again, uh, we do not have any voicemail messages for this case. Uh, and, and if we did receive any, uh, comment, they would have been attached at the, uh, end of the pack.
Thank you, Mr. Twink. Any questions for Mr. Twink? Okay, not seeing any, um.
The petitioner is here and I believe we do have at least one that I've, uh, I recall. I don't know if both. Have come into the meeting, but I think Mr. Joseph Lawson, uh, is part of the meeting.
Yes, sir. Joe Lawson, uh, Consumers Energy, and we also have Doug Scott from Row Professional Services.
All yours.
All right, sir. Appreciate it. Um, just as a quick overview of the project, it's kind of already been, um, stated, so I don't want to. Beat a dead horse, but, um, the project itself is, it's an existing, uh, City Gate facility and these facilities basically take. High pressure gas and reduce it down to a lower pressure that we can distribute on the distribution system that services our customers. Uh, your residents and your business owners. As part of this particular project, it's basically a, uh, just a updating of the facility. Uh, we propose to remove three smaller buildings. The heater, the water, or the, uh, piping, the valves. Uh, the filter separator will be updated. Uh, the heaters will be updated as well. We will be updating the stormwater system as part of this project as well. Uh, then as mentioned, we will install new, uh, piping, valves, uh, heaters. And the, uh, filter separators in addition to the proposed building, uh, where we will move some of our, uh, valves that are currently outside. We, uh, are trying to move as many of these indoors these days as we can. Uh, it helps our crews. Work on them if necessary. And we also have been outfitting many of these facilities with a remote valve system, uh, so they can be. Operated obviously remotely, uh, so we don't have to have crews on site, uh, constantly. The building itself will not be occupied. It's basically the how, like I said, to house the valves and the regulation equipment for the gas. We will have crews in there occasionally to check on the, on the facilities to make sure there's no issue. Um, but there's no one who operates out of there or shows up there or work on a daily basis. There is a masonry wall along Coolidge and 14 Mile that remains as is. Uh, there will be, uh, new fencing along the east and south portions of the facility. That's part of the upgrade. Take down the old chain link fence and, uh, install new. Along with some new swing gates. Uh, in terms of lighting, there's just one new light pole that's located kind of toward the north end of, of the new building. Uh, that light will be on a switch. It will not be on all the time. It's not a dusted on or anything of that nature. Uh, basically when our crews are out there working, they'll flip a switch like you do on your porch light, um, work. Uh, when they're complete, they, they turn it off. I guess that's pretty much all I have in terms of a summary. I can answer any questions you might have.
Question? May? The petitioner?
I'm sorry, I was waiting for Anne. Sorry.
And we lost Anne.
Well then. All right.
I, I'm going to nominate the mayor as an interim chair until our chair returns.
Okay. Pretty inexperienced at that, but we'll try.
I think, I think we need to vote on that.
Oh, do we?
Yeah, we appoint the mayor as interim chair.
Well, we have a vice chair.
We do? Oh, who's our vice chair?
Uh, I'm looking.
Gary, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Me?
You're, you're, you can say to yourself, you can speak.
Okay, take it, Gary.
Very well, you have the floor. Uh, I, for the petitioner, just, uh, two questions. Number one, the function of this. What's going to happen to this new building? Is this, uh, different in kind or character than what's the activity that's currently on site?
No, sir. It's exactly what's happening on site now. It's just new equipment, new facilities. It's an update.
And, and the building appears to be, uh, something of, of, of a pole barn. Uh, tell me a little bit about the building.
It is a, uh, steel building that's specifically designed for this particular use to, to house natural gas facilities. It will be, the, the siding is tan in color with brown accents.
Uh, it's not clear to me how visible this will be from the street. Is, is this is within the property you have fencing up? Can you describe that?
Correct. It will be within the existing, uh, uh, screening wall. From street view, you might be able to see the roof and maybe a portion of the top. I think the screening wall six feet tall, if I'm not mistaken. So you, you may be able to see the top of it.
Okay, and the lighting, uh, you talked about the lighting on the pole. Is that facing in or out? How, where is that? How is that facing?
It's facing in. It's on the, the north side of that, uh, loop driveway that goes around the building. It's on the north side of that facing, uh, facing the heaters in the building itself. So away from 14 Mile.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
They call on Anne Beaky?
Um, thank you. Um, uh, two questions. Uh, my first question is, you said that, um. People occasionally monitor the, tour the equipment, because it's an updated equipment that has more off-site, uh, capacity, ability to be monitored. So will people be visiting the build, that specific, uh, place less than they have, uh, than they currently do? And I'm just re. And I'm asking the question because I'm curious about just safety as you see yourself transitioning to this other kind of equipment.
They usually drive in and check on the equipment even now, once a week or so. This facility is adjacent to our Royal Oak Service Center, so there's always people in that facility. So in terms of, of safety, there's much more monitoring equipment now than what we have on, on existing facilities. Um, that's part of the upgrade and why we're doing this. And then it can be, uh, operated remotely, which also helps, but we do still put boots on the ground, uh, to do a visual inspection, usually once a week.
I ask that in terms of just the security and, uh, general safety, um, in terms of, of the, the neighborhood. The other question I wanted to ask, and forgive this, because it's not really a part of this particular discussion. I'm just curious, with the amount of parking that you have now on your site for the entire, um. A- activity business. Is it always all occupied? And I'm asking this just as a contextual thing for ourselves as we think about parking, um, in facilities. Do you use all 324 like every day?
Honestly, I don't know, because I'm, I'm based out of Jackson. I'd have to follow up with someone that, that works at the service center there. I mean, people, our customers do show up to the service center for service-related items, pay their bills and whatnot. Um, so I can't tell you if it's, if it's full every day. I honestly don't know.
Okay, that's fine. I, I just thought I'd take advantage of you being here, but I, I could even call and ask myself, but, um, thank you. Okay.
So I apologize, my power went out. And, uh, it came back on.
SDT.
Good, yeah, good thing we're with consumers and not DT. I'd probably have to vote no. Um, I, I apologize. Um, Gary, did you jump into chair or do you want me to pick up?
I, you, you, back to you.
Okay, all right. So obviously we're on the petitioner. We're taking questions for the petitioner. Hi, Joe, how you doing?
Very well. How are you?
Good. Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any. Does that mean there's a motion?
You've got two, two actions, one on the special land use. That would be your first. And then you would have the, the site plan, uh, following the special land use.
Is there a motion on the special land use? Mr. Casada?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I, I think the petitioner's, uh, plans and, um, and presentation has established, uh, conformance with the. Seven items. In the ordinance, seven, seven, zero, 11, and, uh, therefore I move to. Approve the site plan. Sorry, I'm sorry, the special land.
Special land use? Okay, is there a support for that?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion, or motion due for the special land use? Okay, not seeing. I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gontina?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Special land use has been approved. Onto the site plan, Mr. Twink?
Uh, I don't have anything to add. The, uh, contingencies are standard contingencies for all our site plans.
Okay. Mr. Casada?
Um, move to approve the site plan with the stated contingencies. Once we.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion? Ms. Douglas?
Actually, I did have a question before the motion. Um, Mr. Twink, I see that they have an aggregate driveway on this property. Um, are those allowed in this zoning and not in other zonings? How do we, how do we square that with our prohibition elsewhere?
Um, well, I believe we've amended parts of the zoning ordinance to allow different types of uses. Uh, also, this isn't technically what we would consider a, a parking area. They've simply labeled. How they're bringing vehicles in and out, so staff's treating this more of a storage yard than a parking area.
Uh, oh, okay. All right, thanks. Any other, just, um, a- any other discussion for this motion? Okay, not seeing. I'll call the roll call vote. Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Gontina?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Site plan has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you, Mr. Lawson.
Likewise. Good to see you. Have a good one.
Okay. We are on to item number five. It's al- also is a special land use in the site plan. SP 20 0406 to re, to construct residential accessory off-street parking lot at 217 Knoll Street. Mr. Twink?
Uh, this request, uh, is a piece of property, uh, just to get you familiar with it, is, uh, east of the courthouse. Uh, just north of Third Street, kind of northeast of Third and, uh, Knolls. Uh, where Knolls dead ends, uh, and then the courthouse is kind of on the backside. Uh, this site several years ago was granted variances for the, uh, psychology clinic to be located on the site. So there is a psychology clinic on the site. Uh, currently, the parking for this, um, office, uh, is in the. On the public property, uh, behind the courthouse. You may have seen signs there that restrict some 22 spaces. Uh, for users and, uh, or tenants and, uh, uh, office staff of the clinic. This request is, is, I guess, kind of a joint request between the property owner, uh, the Downtown Development Authority. Uh, in the sense that the Downtown Development Authority is interested in assisting with the, uh. Payment for this lot. Uh, in order to allow the 22 spots that currently have restrictions on them behind the courthouse to become public spaces. On this, the petitioner and I'll let them, uh, talk slightly about their, uh, benefits that, that they've seen with it, but from. My conversations with them, uh, they have a difficult time, uh, keeping those 22 spots from being used by the general public, whether it's. People trying to attend the farmer's market or others. Uh, but that's one of the benefits that the, uh, property owner sees from this request. Uh, the property is zoned, one-family residential. Uh, that's why it's listed as a special land use. Under the city's residential accessory off-street parking lot provisions. Uh, so we've noticed it is a, a public hearing. This is one of the few special land uses that is a recommendation from the ci- uh, planning commission to the city commission. The final approval on residential accessory off-street parking lots. Uh, is the city commissions. Uh, so after the planning commission meeting this evening. Uh, in your action, your recommendation would then be forwarded to the city commission for its, uh, review and final determination. As you, uh, they are proposing a, a parking lot south of the existing building. You can see it on the, uh, site plan. It will contain 22 parking spaces. Uh, it would also contain a, uh, refuge enclosure. And walkway up to the, uh, entrance of the, um. Psychology clinic. It would also include a driveway that goes, uh, from, uh, the parking lot on their property. Uh, to the intersection of, uh, Knolls and Third. It also includes a proposed, uh, six-foot, uh, vinyl. White fence along the south property line, uh, as screening to the parking lot. Uh, there is no screening proposed on the east property line in that existing fencing, uh, already exists from. The properties that back up to this east property. already exists from the properties that back up to this east property line. They are removing the plan calls for the removal of several trees. We have that outlined. I believe it's thirty-five in total. In terms of the diameters and things that are six inches or more. The proposed plan has a row of six-foot ivy of ID along the west side of the driveway as replacement. I guess that's what I'll end the report on. And I know there is a, I know Josh Keeler is on the phone. I don't know or on the meeting. I don't know if there's anyone else. We are. Are you there, Josh?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do we have time for some questions of staff first?
Yes, please.
So am I correct in my assumption that the property owners here own the vacated Knoll Street driveway that is that access lane from Knolls onto their property?
They are the owner of that property. Yes.
Has, is there a potential for them to, instead of using that driveway, having a driveway cut through from behind the courthouse directly into their parking lot?
I believe I'd have to go back and check, but I believe all of that has been vacated. And that would mean they would have to cross city-owned property rather than having access to city or to a public right-of-way.
I'm sorry, to a?
To a public right-of-way?
Tell me more. I'm, how does that work?
Well, city property is 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 not considered right-of-way, meaning it's it's like private-owned property, even though it's owned by the city. It's it's not considered anyone can access it.
And what what right is there? Does that mean there's a right-of-way between the city parking lot and their property on the west side of their property?
No, there isn't. There is no public right-of-way there. That's that's my point. It's private property.
So, and the parking lot is public property?
Right.
So if they, you know, cut a hole in the fence and put a driveway in at the same level as the existing public parking lot, people could just drive onto their property there, right?
If the city wanted to have access across that to their, I'm assuming so, you would also though lose some of the parking spots that are along that property line.
True. And how many parking spaces does a business of this size and nature need?
Without going back to the actual waiver and the file, I'm going to guess it's the twenty-two. I'm going to, based on recollection, say that the reason the number that was assigned along the back of the courthouse was probably relevant to what they needed for as a waiver.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Klooster?
Yeah, so in order for this private property owner to cross the city's private property, that would require a executing and access easement for them to maintain the rights to that access. Would that be correct, Mr. Twing?
I'm not, I mean, it's not a question. I it could be that the city commission's going to want some sort of agreement to allow that to occur. The other thing I want to do is check is is I believe all of the right-of-ways that are around the courthouse, around the new city hall, around the police station have all been vacated. There aren't any left, so I believe there would have to be some sort of access easement granted to to get there. I think it may also be difficult then to, and I want to speak for the petitioner, but I believe part of their reasoning was trying to get direction to this property in terms of an address, in terms of a directing people how to get to it. But I don't want to speak for.
Are you able to hear us, Tim? This is Josh Keeler.
Yes.
Okay, my father is here, James Keeler. That is correct. With the new construction of the police station on the north side of his property, there is the the patients and the occupants that that rent his office space are facing a difficult way of being able to find his office. We're looking at using this driveway with proper signage so that people can access it and and are have one way in and out, so it's easier for them to give direction to clients coming in.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Twing? And if not, we can move to the petitioner. Mr. Casada?
Just a clarification about the ordinance here. So this is a one-family zone, one-family residential, is not a rezoning. But the tree ordinance, the two-for-one is applicable to this because it's it's because under special land use. Is that what I'm understanding? Yes. Okay, thanks.
And then Mr. Gantina?
We have a question regarding, it appears the residential property just south adjacent to the the vacated portion of the private property. It appears that they've been, they access their portion of their property via that vacated out. Do we know if there is any sort of granted access in place? Or will this this change, I guess, that particular property's?
The city's not going to have any record of any. I I think Josh can address their position with the adjacent property owner, but again, it's the driveway is on private property that is owned by the petition.
Yeah, that this is Josh. Yeah, that is true. The resident who is using that as a makeshift driveway asked my father permission to use it, and he said no, and she went ahead and built a garage and started using it anyway.
And fenced the property.
And also placed a chain link fence at the back of the property, locking us from it.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Twing? If not, we'll move on to the petitioner. Okay, Mr. Keeler's?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Do you have anything else to add to Mr. Twing's presentation regarding the special land use? Or the site plan?
Not not really. Tim was very thorough. Tim actually drafted the plans with our operation, and we're very appreciative of that. We have had a real difficulty with parking. I came to this property after owning a house on South Washington, an office building that we used for fifteen to twenty years. The city appropriated that land, selling it to developers to build condominiums. So we were forced to move. The city then put a reserve bid on this property for me. And I very much loved it. It's a very natural setting with a house that was built in eighteen sixty-four, which I've been able to have designated with the state as historic. I'm attempting to maintain that for the city. And we were able to get the office building built. But parking has been a real problem, and of course, with the construction of both the courthouse and now the police station, we simply do not have enough parking for our patients and our staff. So the twenty-two places represent, we have eleven offices, and that allows for a car space for each, for the professional and for the patient. So we very much appreciate this. I think Tim could answer technical questions much more completely than I can. But that's a bit of our history and where we stand now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner? Okay, I don't see any. So then do we have a motion for the special?
Before you do that, I would like to remind the planning commission that the public comment that you have received in regard to this public hearing is attached at the end of the report. You will see those email communications as well as a written written letter. And hopefully everyone's had a chance to look through those.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Ms. Beaky?
Is this appropriate time for a general comment?
Sure.
So so I did review all of this, including the comments that were submitted. And again, I have, I struggle with this very hard, and I struggle a lot with the issue of parking, especially in our downtown. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of parking places and garages on the street, in private lots, in public lots. And I know people have in their mindset this idea to drive to the door and go in, like the staff, the staff of the city, the staff of wherever you work. But but Royal Oak, as it is, as a walkable community with nice tree coverage, with a beautiful mix of homes, is not only important in terms of livability here in Michigan, it's also important, I would even consider it world-class. I've lived in many, many different cities. And the more we erode our public spaces with these parking lots, instead of sharing the lots, using the the high-rise that we have now built, the different parking structures, we're eroding the very beauty and the very things that attract people to Royal Oak. And again, I don't have it in front of me right now, but the tree report that was done by the city two or three years ago, we're losing our tree canopy very fast. We're not replacing it. It's not the same to plant a small tree as a big one in in the access to the farmer's market or to wherever. We should have access parking at doors for handicapped, disabled people who cannot walk a few blocks. But if we don't utilize this this high-rise parking, the other parking we have and start to share it, we're turning ourselves into kind of, I'll use the derogatory term towards the suburban parking areas, and it's it's really bad for us overall, I think, in the long term, and I respect the issue of this particular owner and his particular place. But if we don't start thinking more collectively about this, we are, I think, undermining ourselves generally. So I have, I would have a hard time supporting this, except for a few parking spaces for people who are actually disabled and cannot walk three blocks, because we have so much parking within the area. Which I see empty very often.
Any other comments or a motion?
I got a question for Mr. Twing, if I can.
Okay, Mr. Casada?
So if I understand your report, there's the, and maybe this is for the site plan. I'm not I'm so sure, but if there's thirty-five trees coming down and they have put seventy trees in, that's not something they're doing on this lot. I don't take it. How was that implemented? That's correct. The the ordinance talks about replacing two-for-one, and again, that's subject to the planning commission's evaluation, whether that's appropriate on a site-by-site basis. It gives you the the initial parameter set on it. So it's really anywhere from the removal of thirty-five to your review to indicate whether or not you would see the need for additional screening, and if so, where the placement of the parking lot again was done to try and keep it to meet the need for twenty-two spots, as well as placement in regards to the existing building. You know, whether or not it's possible to set more vegetation on this site or not is we can always put some on. I don't know that we would get seventy.
So Ms. Douglas had her hand up, and then I have a comment about the the trees. Ms. Douglas?
Just comment on the trees, please. This is Dr. Ke. When this property was approved for our use, I was restricted and the trees removed. We were only allowed to take out the absolute essential ones for the new building. So all of the mature trees remained. Since that time, I have lost the number and had to have the ash removed. We've tried to keep it as forested as possible. The other issue is, it was my impression that we were required to have these parking places. We certainly had them at our previous location. Our patients often do come in a state of duress. It's difficult for them, and many are handicapped. So so it was my impression that they were required rather than optional. Thank you.
Ms. Douglas, she had your hand up?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, Mr. Twing, the staff report says the petitioner currently has an agreement with the city to use twenty-two off-street parking spaces in this area. Whose initiative is this to in to to change the arrangement? Is it the city that wants to free up parking spaces for public use? Or is it the petitioner who's very, you know, strongly wishing to own their own parking? And I have a second question after that.
I I would believe it's a combination of both. If, and I believe as the petitioners indicated, they they strongly feel, given that new construction is going on, that it benefits them to get those twenty-two spots out of what is in an area that is being used by the general public. They have an issue on particularly on farmer's market day, keeping, trying to keep the general public out of those restricted spots. It is also benefit from the city's end to open those twenty-two spots up for everyone else's use. The DDA has sought as a as a interest at party to the extent that they've initially said they're willing to consider funding the cost of this parking lot. Obviously, the steps that are going to be taken here are planning commission review, a recommendation to the city commission. If the city commission approves it, it would be sent out for bid, getting an actual construction dollar back, actually have it installed. That would then be taken to the DVA to see if they truly would pass a resolution to actually fund it and award a contract to have it put in. All all three of those steps are steps that need to be either approved for this to go forward. So that I, it it's kind of a dual initiative. I don't know that there's any party that came with it forefront. Dr. Keeler and staff has had ongoing conversations because of the police station being built, keeping them in the loop of the construction schedule, when vehicles are coming to make sure they have access. So there's been ongoing dialogue between staff and Dr. Keeler because of his property, because of the civic center project discussion and see what the issues were. And this was just one of the items that came up as part of those ongoing conversations.
So
if I might just say.
I'd like to, let me continue here. So second question. What happens if this business closes? What if, you know, Dr. Keeler, you know, moves on, his tenants move out? What happens to the building in the parking lot then? Does it retain? What? Does it fall back to residential zoning? Does it retain its current use?
The the variances run with the property. It would retain its use until that use was either converted or abandoned for more than a year's period. But it would retain the ability to be an office, psychology-type clinic, or similar use under the variances granted for under the zoning board of appeals variances. That's that's true whether this parking lot goes in or not.
Sure, got it. So third question. When we When we pass the the ordinance that says developments have to replace trees on a two to one basis, do those new trees have to be on that property or can they be placed elsewhere?
I believe there's some other provisions where the where the it could be made up either through some contribution to do it elsewhere. We really haven't had that occur on a project yet, so I can't tell you how that would be implemented at this point. But I believe that's the intent of some of the provisions.
Very good. Thank you.
So Ms. Douglas, my memory on that, when we discussed this, was that we we there would be a tree bank. So if they they could only plant ten trees, they have to plant sixty trees somewhere else. And as we all know, many of our city's trees are being cut down in the boulevards. Certainly in my neighborhood, we're losing a lot of our forty and fifty year old silver maples, which are gorgeous, but their their time has passed. So I know the city needs to replace a lot of these boulevard trees. So maybe the mayor can speak through. I saw his hand up.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's part of it. Yeah, you're absolutely right about the bank. You know, I think in the way we wrote everything, it was in the event that you can't physically fit these on your property for whatever. Put it into the thing. I guess my question my question would be more for the petitioner. I sensed a little bit of reservation in the in the voice. Perhaps I'm I'm wrong about, you know, wanting this this parking lot. You know, there's some discussion about mandatory or, you know, nice to have or, you know, joint. I maybe if I could hear a little bit more from the perspective of the co-petitioner. Sure.
But can I can I jump in real? Doug just came in and indicated that the provision with the land bank that we had talked about at the planning commission actually was removed from the final ordinance. So there is no land bank provision in the zoning ordinance.
Well, yeah, if I might speak just briefly. I very much tried to keep the property as it was when I came. Actually, this it's about one point. It's an acre and a tenth. And it was primarily gardens owned by the Helsley family. And I've tried to maintain as much of that spirit as possible. I realize the necessity for our patients as well. So we really do need these parking spaces. And it has been a major problem, particularly now. I've actually had to turn away several prospective tenants because we don't have enough parking currently. Seven of our places are currently taken up by the construction. So we've had a struggle. I'm ambivalent to answer your question. You read me well. I was trying to keep it as much a natural garden setting as possible, but feeling the necessity as we move toward the future. I I feel that probably this is our best option and safest for the people we see. I've also tried to keep it a very private space. The nature of our work requires confidentiality. So I I really do favor the parking, the proposed parking. I think it will alleviate a lot of our problems. Thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner or Mr. Twing? Okay, so would there be a motion on Mr. Casada?
More questions. Again, if there's no if there's no tree bank, do we have to recommend some sort of waiver or is that something for the city commission? If they can't be seventy trees planted on this property and there's no tree bank, then then how does this part of this ordinance get met? Do we or do we have to waive it? Oh, with the with the landscape provisions, the planning commission generally has discretion to recommend whether the screening and landscaping based on the submitted site plan is sufficient. In in this case, you are recommending to the city commission. So the city commission would have final say, but if you recommended the plan as submitted, that would go forward with that recommendation. If you recommended that that a certain number of trees be added, you would go forward with that recommendation. And I guess I would ask one more question. Under this plan, how many trees are going to be replaced on this property? Basically, if you look at the site plan that's in front of you, the proposed planning are trees along the west side. There are harbor vitality trees, they're three foot on center. And I believe there are twenty three six. All right. Is that something that we recommend in connection with the special land use or the site plan? I would think the site. You could include it as part of the site plan. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next. Mr. Casada?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay.
I'm gonna move that we recommend approval of the special land use. I think again, and I think we have to put this on the record, that's why I'm doing it. I think the petitioner's presentation and the plans before us have met the established that such use of proposed location will will meet the being conformance, let me say, with one through seven of the ordinance, seven seventy dash eleven. And therefore, I move that we recommend approval of the city commission as stated.
Okay, there's motions made. Is there support? Ms. Douglas? Support, okay. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Casada?
Yes, I think this is a unique piece of property with unique problems. I don't think that if if the petitioner were to move on, I highly doubt this is going to go back to residential. I think that this is is right here in downtown. I think it's gonna whoever purchasing in the future would be surprising if it was residential. This is a really a commercial property and given its location and they they, you know, it's right next to the public parking lot there. So I think that I think it's not, it's not going to be residential again. So given that it's it needs the parking, it's a it's a plan that may not be a perfect plan because it's a parking lot in on a on a area that used to be green. But I think it's a, I think it's a plan that meets the requirements of the of the ordinance and I'm in favor of it.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the roll call vote. Mr. Guntina? Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Ms. Vicky?
I think I have to say no on this one.
Okay, and I'm a yes. So the special land use has passed. Onto the site plan, Mr. Twing, anything new on that?
No, other than, again, indicating that it's going to need city commission approval. And then the landscaping item under three is your determination of whether the plan is sufficient or you want more.
Okay. Okay, is there any discussion on this or a motion? Mr. Casada?
I will, I will move to approve the site plan with the contingencies and I would accept the landscaping as depicted.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Klooster. Any discussion on this motion? Miss Mayor and then Ms. Douglas.
Say, I have a little bit of reservation on this one. I do think Ms. Vicky brings up some really important points. You know, I appreciate the the response of the petitioner. You know, in an idealistic world, I think we would want to keep everything preserved there. I think, you know, fifty years from now, you know, as Royal Oak builds up around this property, it really could be a gem to have less parking lot and more, you know, aesthetics there. I understand the problem in front of us. And I do agree with Mr. Casada that, you know, this is not going to be residential, you know, anytime in our lifetime. So I struggle a little bit with it. I support it now. Love to see if there are other alternatives down the road. There's still a lot of steps I have to go to get this thing approved with the city commission as well as, you know, bids come back and all these other things. So you know, even in that process, if there's any really innovative ideas, I suggest that we bring them back and try to, I understand the pain right now during construction, but gosh, I just hate seeing, you know, such a beautiful property with the green space getting eaten up by, you know, pavement. It just seems so less serene, but I understand the privacy concerns and all of this as well, the patients. So it's a tough one for me, but I'll be supporting it now.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes, I I, Mayor and I should be on the alert to bring back the tree ordinance to the city commission to add back that provision that we can, that developers can offset their tree responsibilities elsewhere in the city through a contribution to a tree bank. So I I promised to make that happen. I thought we had, I thought that was one of the the provisions of it. And I just want to say, I mean, I read the comments from neighbors and I'm, you know, very sympathetic to their their desire to keep that that what is now looks like a a country lane intact. I'm sure with, you know, lilacs and the shrubs, it's very pretty there and it has a very nice natural feel to it. But the fact remains that the the petitioner here owns that right of way, owns that pathway and driveway. And it's their right to use it as they wish. So I, you know, this is one of those cases where, you know, private property rights have have prominence in our decision making.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Ms. Vicky?
If it's at all feasible, when you go back to the ordinance about the trees in the tree bank, I think it's not only about replanting trees, but also potentially supporting the maintenance of other trees if around the city that could be part of that bank because that could be equally as important. And again, with this particular property, I full respect for private property rights, but again, as a community, we have a lot of collective parking that is empty ninety percent of the time. So so not, again, pertaining to this, and I really respect both of the petitioners and the doctor, we're keeping things as they have been and making the best use of the property. And I'll regretfully not support this, but I'd also like to encourage all of us on the planning commission, city commission, somewhere in the mix, we need to talk about parking as a collective and not just as these separate one offs, in my opinion. And I, and again, I appreciate all that's been done to keep the property in the shape it is and then the good business that's being done there.
Mr. Guntina?
So I just wanted to, I guess, agree with a lot of what's just been said. I'm kind of have reservations about this as well. There is a lot of greenery that's going away, but I certainly appreciate and respect the petitioner's position that they're in. It is difficult. I do understand that parking situation currently will be challenging for what they need. But I I am going to be not supporting this because I do believe that there is a probably a more efficient way to get it, gain access to that parking area. Even if maybe through some sort of agreement with the city, especially if the DDA is potentially involved in funding this. I believe there's something that can be worked out with a more efficient access. So I'm I'm going to be voting no on the site plan.
Any other discussion? So if I had to make a bet, I would have bet that we had a tree bank language in the ordinance. I I'm very surprised that we don't. I thought for sure we talked about that and that it was in there. And I'm embarrassed that that I didn't catch that. So I'm glad to hear Ms. Douglas and the mayor talk about that because I think it's important to put that back in. And I think it's important, I, as a matter of fact, I do remember the discussion that if the petitioner or any land petitioner could not put trees, that they would have to submit a bank of some sort to the city and put these trees in our parks or on on our parkways, road right of ways. But anyway, thank you, Ms. Douglas, for bringing that up. So I I will be supporting this because I think it is a unique situation. It pains me to see the trees removed and I think it pains the the petitioner as well, but I don't see any alternative at this point and the need that this petitioner has for his unique circumstances with his clientele, I think it warrants it. So I I I'm still hoping that they'll be maybe be able to massage a little bit, something a little bit different when the time comes, but those are my comments. And I appreciate Ms. Vicky. I I think she brings up a good point about parking in general. Any other discussion? So not saying I'll call for the roll call vote, Mr. Guntina? Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Ms. Vicky?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the site plan moves forward also to the city commission. Okay. Next on the agenda, item six. This is also a public hearing. It's a special land use and site plan SB twenty zero six zero eight to establish a retail jewelry store and pawn broker and or pawn shop. Yes.
I hate to interrupt. I'm gonna have to accuse myself on this one, so I'm gonna hit hit the buttons here and I'll see afterwards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Casada.
Thank you.
Ziedman Jewelry and Loan at thirty two three zero two Woodward Avenue. Mr. Twing?
The first part of this, as you indicated, is a special land use request. The petitioner is proposing to renovate the the Joe's Army Navy Store into a jewelry store. As part of that operation, they're proposing to also have an operation in terms of loaning money to customers for receipt jewelry for collateral, which by definition is under the ordinance of pawn broker. That part of the operation makes this request a special land use for the special land use report. The setbacks for a pawn broker pawn shop requirements indicate that they must have a setback of at least a hundred and fifty feet from any residential zone. Property to the northeast across the public alley is owned one family residential. That public alley is twenty feet in width. So that particular standard is not being met under the ordinance and would in the planning commission would have to allow the petitioner to seek that variance from the zoning board appeals as part of your special land use action. In addition, there is a requirement that all adult oriented uses, which pawn brokers also fall under in the definition of the ordinance of a setback of at least a thousand feet between those operations and schools, libraries, religious institution, parks and playgrounds. The property that's proposed in front of you this evening is some two hundred and thirty five feet from Pioneer Park and five hundred feet from Emmanuel Bethel Church, which is located in the southwest side of Woodward Avenue. The petitioner would also there, you would have to grant them permission to seek waiver from that requirement in front of the zoning board of appeals as part of your special land use discussion. The jewelry store as provided would or identified would require one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of usable area. The building's approximately forty one hundred and eighty square feet in terms of usable area and therefore would be required to have seventeen parking spaces. There are no off-street parking spaces with property boundary. Only the on-street parking spaces are available within Dakota Road right of way and Woodward Avenue right of way. However, no variances are required. However, no variances are required, uh, from the zoning board in this regard and that this isn't considered, uh, an increase in the required number of parkings from parking spaces from the prior use. Uh, one of the other items that, that I think we'll get into in terms of the site plan, uh, not necessarily part of the special land use request, is in regards to the building form and signage, uh, and then also, uh, in terms of lighting. Uh, but I'll stop with the special land use report and we'll cover a couple of those items when we do the site plan. At that point, I would also point, this is, this is the one item where we did receive, uh, voicemail messages. Doug Hedges from my staff is, uh, going to play those, uh, at the time you open the public hearing. Uh, but if you have any questions of me, uh, after, or now or after the petitioner, I'd be happy to address them. But again, I do have, uh, twenty, I believe it's twenty-three, uh, voicemail messages we'll need to play, uh, when the, uh, public hearing is open. And then there are also, uh, copies of communications, letters, emails attached to the end of the report that we've received also.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. We have questions from Mr. Twain at this time on the special land use. Is Douglas? Is that? Nope. Okay. Uh, okay. So then I guess we can move on to the petitioner. Would you like to, uh, make your presentation?
Yes, we would, uh, Mayor Chairman. Uh, hello, I am Dennis Cowan and I am here with, uh, representing Ziedman's. With me, uh, at his office is Jason Krieger of Krieger Clatt Architects. And also with us is Brad LeBret, who is a vice president of Ziedman's. I would like to go over, uh, the criteria with respect to the special land use, but also in the context of the business operations. So you have a complete and full understanding. Uh, Ziedman's is very pleased to be here before you. They are a fourth generation family business being founded and operating since nineteen twenty-three. They provide an outstanding jewelry and watch sales, uh, store with a loan option. And over their ninety-seven years of operation, they have served literally hundreds of thousands of customers who trust them with their valuables and their family heirlooms. And I will note that in the Free Press article I forwarded to you, they have been particularly helpful to families dealing with economic issues resulting from the pandemic. They have purchased the old Joe's Army Navy Store and we have a spectacular renovation, which Jason will go over in a little while. Quite frankly, this new building could not come at a better time. If you travel on Woodward between Normandy and Fourteen Mile, in that half mile stretch, you will find eleven, possibly twelve vacant buildings in storefronts. In addition, the future of the Art Vans building is uncertain. We also do not know what impact the pandemic will have on some of the current businesses. We are hopeful they all will survive. Uh, chances are some may not. But that being said, this is definitely an area in need of economic development. And first and foremost, Ziedman's is a jewelry and watch store. It creates custom jewelry. It maintains and repairs fine watches and provides professional appraisal services. Now, Mr. Twain has explained why we're, why we're here, so I won't go over all that in detail, but I do want to point out to the commission that a retail jewelry store is a permitted use in the zoning district and a pawnbroking operation is allowed as a special land use. So both of these are allowed under the ordinance, of course, one with the special land use. And we believe and have demonstrated in our letter, which I would like to make part of the record, uh, that I sent to you and with what we're going to present to you this evening, that Ziedman's exceeds all of the requirements for a special land use. And as a result, we'd like to just summarize a few of the high points. First, there'll be a reduction in hours because Ziedman's is only open till five-thirty. Most of the other businesses in the area are open much later and of course restaurants late into the evening. This will not be a burden and they're closed on Sundays. This facility will not be a burden on any city services or utilities and it will also be a positive addition to the economic welfare of the city. Now, I do want to address head on that there have been some concerns which you have read and I'm sure will hear during public comment about the loan and pawnbroking license aspect of the business. I would like to take this opportunity to put those concerns to rest. First of all, let's look at the function on the loan side. Many of us are familiar with home mortgages. You buy a home, it's your property and you use that as collateral for a loan. It's not much different with Ziedman's, except in this instance, you take a jewelry or a watch, which is your personal property and use that as collateral. Michigan law recognizes this as a normal and regular occurrence and a personal property right. And it does devolve to municipalities the ability to regulate, um, this particular loan function. And I will say that Royal Oak has adopted a very comprehensive ordinance and I'm holding it up. It's ordinance five twenty-one. I would note for the record that this was passed in nineteen ninety-four when I was mayor. I remember very well, we worked closely with our city attorney's office to develop a comprehensive ordinance to protect the citizens of Royal Oak. I am confident that Ziedman's will be able to meet that high standard. This is a special ordinance which requires a detailed record of each and every transaction, including fingerprints and signatures of the customer. I will tell you that Ziedman's in its regular and normal business practice goes beyond these strict requirements. They have a photograph of each customer and they also upload all information concerning the transaction to a national and international website called leadsonline.com. That may not be familiar to you, but it would be familiar to Chief O'Donoghue and investigators in the city because it is a primary technology hub for law enforcement with respect to personal property investigations. Also, Ziedman's complies with all IRS regulations depending on the amount of money that is involved in the transaction. As we stated in Ziedman's plan of operations, the loans are only against what they sell. Jewelry, watches, necklaces, diamonds, rings, perhaps quality flatware. It is a very limited amount of items. They do not loan against guns, war or military memorabilia, clothing, chemicals of any kind or fine wines. That is not part of the business model and they specifically do not take any of those items as collateral. It is a heavily regulated business and they are very proud to have two licenses in good standing with the city of Detroit and Southfield. I did attach two letters from the Southfield and Detroit Police Departments that indicate, and I quote, "Ziedman's has always been run in an exemplary fashion without any complaints from neighboring businesses or residents." I would submit that Ziedman's will be as safe and secure and if not more, as any business on Woodward or anywhere in, where in the city because their customers are just like you and I. And let me give you a couple of examples. Who are the customers that use a loan collateral or pawnbroking operation? They are small construction companies who in between payments from, um, the property owners or banks need, need money for additional, uh, equipment or supplies. They are many women and men who are going through marital strife and divorce. They are individuals who suffer a significant setback such as major car repair not covered by insurance or perhaps having to replace a water sewer leaking on their property. But also some good items such as putting a down payment on a home. In support of Ziedman's, we have presented to you a petition with forty-two signatures. We had twelve, uh, individuals who have businesses on Woodward adjacent to the property sign, as well as twenty-eight individuals, uh, around the community. And I will be frank with you, when those signatures were gathered at the New Meyer Store at, uh, uh, Woodward Corners and they were not rejected after full disclosure by one resident of the city who welcomed this new opportunity and new construction in the city. We would like to point out to you that there has been an existing pawnbroking licensed operation, albeit in the city of Berkeley called the Pawn Shop, which is directly across from the Shrine Church and the Shrine School. We have not been able to locate any complaints that would, uh, indicate any kind of detriment to either Shrine Church or the school nor to any diminution in property values in the city of Berkeley. Also about a mile away from the Joe's Army Navy Site are two licensed businesses in the city of Birmingham. Abbott's Coin and Birmingham Jewelry. We would note that on both the residential streets adjacent to those businesses, there are a number of new home construction and renovations with the, which occurred thereby supporting, there would be no diminution in value of property. So we trust that in the event we are approved at this stage and hopefully with the zoning board of appeals on Thursday night, when we apply that the city of Royal Oak through its police department will do a full and fair investigation as to whether Ziedman meets all of ordinance chapter five twenty-one criteria. And we believe Ziedman's will be able to meet that test. In conclusion, again, we believe all the special land use criteria is exceeded. We believe that the site plan and the building are, uh, exemplary and we ask you to approve, approve the request which we have made this evening. I'll now hand this over to Jason to go over the site plan.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jason Krieger from Krieger Clatt Architects, twenty-one, twenty East Eleven Mile. And I'm going to walk, uh, everybody through the proposed, uh, renovation of the building. Uh, Tim, would you please go to the existing photos of Joe's Army Navy? I think they're at the very beginning of the set. So I think we all know Joe's Army Navy. It's, uh, a property that has not been renovated or improved in quite some time. So Ziedman's purchased this recently during the COVID pandemic and the plan is to renovate it extensively and improve it and, uh, hopefully create a better presence on this corner if, if we can get through to the next steps. And, uh, create something that, that they and also the surrounding community can be proud of. Uh, what we were proposing to do is basically, uh, demolish the front elevation pretty much completely and rebuild it and then also a good portion of the sides. And the concept which I'll show you is to, uh, elevate and raise, uh, the height of the building, uh, in order to give it more prominence and presence on Woodward. Uh, the material palette is simple intentionally because as you go down Woodward, it's very busy and, uh, congested visually. So we wanted to simplify the building and, uh, give it a very high-end look, uh, with, uh, with that in mind. So actually if you go up just a little bit, Tim, really quick. Uh, one more please. Thank you. So those are the existing elevations of the building. And, uh, the lower parapet or the wall that you see there, the second elevation down, I believe it was fourteen feet and going off of memory, well thirteen, fourteen feet. The, the taller piece where the existing sign was, uh, or is currently is twenty-seven feet tall. So when we were looking at the heights for this parapet, we wanted to be in between there somewhere. And we also studied neighboring buildings. We wanted to try and create some form of unity with other buildings along, along Woodward. So all of that would virtually be, would be demolished. Also, the entire interior will be gutted. And, uh, the intent, we don't have it designed yet, but the, the idea would be to have it look like a high-end jewelry store, similar to the photos we showed you, which was their Southfield location. Uh, let's go to the next, uh, slide, please, Tim. So this right here is a floor plan, uh, slash site plan because you can see both. Uh, so right now there's only, uh, parking on Woodward in the public right of way. There's approximately five spaces. And then along the Cota, I believe there are about ten spaces there. And these are all on the public right of way. However, uh, what we've all, we've all shopped along Woodward and those spaces tend to serve the businesses that they're in front of. The way that the floor plan is designed is we have the best to be on the corner in order to hallmark that entrance. The front portion there, you'll see all of the jewelry cases that go around. There's restrooms. We have the loan windows towards the back. And then in the very back we have offices and then we have the safe room where they have large safes where they put the jewelry. There's also a basement, which is I believe about five hundred square feet, which is for utilities and whatever other storage would be needed. Overall, the gross square footage is just over, uh, five thousand square feet. Uh, so if we go to the next one, Tim, please. So these are the elevations of the building. Uh, currently we're not showing signage because that's going to be done by the signage company. That's not part of the submittal. And, uh, we, that's why we have it clouded because initially when we submitted this, we had signage as a placeholder. And, uh, it's just one of those things where we're not sign people. We took it off to not confuse the issue. So we have, uh, the dark, uh, areas, uh, the very dark areas are porcelain tile. The gray areas will be a metal panel and then the light beige around the door will be a cast stone. And then we have a metal awning that will wrap the building. And that material will be continuous all the way around. The other thing that that parapet provides is screening for the rooftop units. Now, the parapet, uh, is, uh, gosh, I forgot off the top of my head. I want to say ten, eleven feet taller than the roof. Really for rooftop units, you mainly need about five to six feet because they're about four feet tall plus they sit on a curb. Again, the height is, is us trying to give a nice presence and it felt good to the eye to have a certain height. So that's where that came from. But the parapet is doing double duty. It's giving the building some presence. It's also screening the rooftop units for, for visual, from a visual standpoint, as well as noise from any neighbors because those wrap all the way around the building. Um, now, we also have light fixtures proposed. We have a photometric plan that we'll go through with you. Uh, we have, if you look at the light fixture on the left, it's just a wall pack. It only pushes light down that's at the back by the dumpster. Oh, I forgot to mention, we put, we also moved the dumpster indoors. I forgot to mention that. So that was one of the comments from the planning department and we, uh, complied. The, the goal here, we, we, we want to reduce any variances, any issues that we're complying with as much as we can. And the, uh, the wall sconce is an up-down wall sconce that you'll see on the right. We've done that numerous times. They're all around the city. And I'll show you on photometric. There's really no light spill off or fall off. It pretty much just washes the building and that's really it. Uh, it's there to make it look good at night. It's there to give a little bit of light around the building at the sidewalks from a safety standpoint. So people can see where they're walking, but that's really about it. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. Oh, these are really for information. These are building sections coming through. You can see the parapet height. And the black triangles that you see, those are, we're going to have to put, if this augments or we would be some kind of kickers to support the parapet. So that's, uh, that's what that is. Uh, next slide, please. Next one. Okay. Here's the photometric plan. So, Tim, I don't know if you can zoom in on this. There you go. Perfect. So what you're going to see is right beneath the light fixtures themselves, you'll see some foot candles of eighteen point six. I'm having a hard time seeing all of those. Twenty-five. It's creating a hotspot. It's a cone of about this big. And then literally six feet away, it turns into zero point three, point, you know, points over. So in my opinion, we're complying with the ordinance along Woodward and Cota. And then we got rid of all the lights on the public alley but at the dumpster. And I wouldn't think any resident would want that, but if you look at seven point eight, but then it fought, I mean, actually they don't have it beneath that, but it would fall off to zero just as fast. So, the critical thing here, in my opinion, is that we do not want to light up the neighbors, uh, to the, uh, it would be the east and minimize anything along Dakota, which is a commercial property anyways. And then Woodward, you can see we're not impacting them. So I think they were complying with the intent of the ordinance. But we're still also doing what would be right for this building along Woodward. Uh, let's see your next slide, Tim. This is a graphic from our lighting designer, which shows you generally, it's really schematic, but it gives you an idea of what, what it would look like at night. The other item that I want to bring up is the, uh, there was a comment about all paving utilities to comply with the city engineering department. Uh, you know, obviously we would comply with that. We, I don't remember seeing any comments about that. However, anything that they, they have, we would, we would, uh, we would do. We, about a year and a half, two years ago, we did a project just We, about a year and a half, two years ago, we did a project just off the street from here. And what they asked us to do was improve some of the public parking out from on Woodward. And then I believe at the corner, they had us add a green space. So that's not reflected here because we didn't, we haven't gotten the comments, but that would be, that we would have, we would have to comply with that. I believe those are the items I wanted to touch on, so. I'm all, I'm all set. Do you want to go to Brad?
Yeah. Chairperson, I, I don't know. We, I've been getting some texts about my client has been trying to get in. I don't know if they have to be let in. It'd be LeBret. I don't know if you have that on the.
Dennis, what's the client's name?
Mr. LeBret. Can you let him in?
Yeah, it might be under, are you seeing, would you see an email or?
I see a Spencer Schaefer.
That would be, yes, that would be, that would, they went through Spencer's phone. Yeah. Yeah, or Spencer's email. Yeah. Do Spencer Schaefer.
Okay. It'd be a minute, but.
Okay, okay. All right.
While we're waiting, I got just a quick question for you, Mr. Krieger. You showed the, on the site plan, the, the architecture of the building. I'm looking at the very first page. Is that just a photograph of a different building? It's, it's, looks like it's brownish in color with signs on. It would be the western south sides.
No.
What is that picture depicting?
So the very, the very first image on the cover page, that's a rendering of this building.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Yeah. The difference is that there, there is signage on there.
Okay.
That is, that is literally just there as a placeholder. So.
But that's what the building would look like, is what you're saying.
Yeah, correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
It looks like we have Mr. Schaefer. He's on mute. Mr. Schaefer, would you like to?
Actually, Mr. LeBret.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hi, Mr. LeBret.
No problem. I was just having difficulties. I'm sorry.
Okay. Is there something that you'd like to add to the? No. Okay. Okay. Mr. Krieger and Mr. Cowan, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, other than I forgot to thank you for having this meeting. I participated them from around the state. In fact, I was on one earlier on the western side of the state. And I'm just appreciative that you're keeping the business of the city moving. So thank you very much.
Well, you missed about two site plans ago. My power went out, so. Okay, so thank you for that. So then now I think, Mr. Twing, is it appropriate to go to the public hearing portion?
If that's what you're ready for, and there's no questions at the petitioner, I think you normally do that first and then you do go to the public hearing.
Okay. Ms. Douglas has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So this is a classified as a jewelry store. And that means that it always has to be a jewelry store. And maybe this is a question for Mr. Twing. I mean, if this store decided to sell lawnmowers or guns, more appropriately, would it, would it be, can we prohibit it from doing that?
Well, it's, it's considered retail now and it was Joe's Army Navy. The jewelry store portion of this is considered a retail establishment and would be allowed. The special land use portion, that's part of the part of this report, is the fact they're running, want to run or establish a pawnbroker establishment. So if you approved the pawnbroker and based on their plan of operation, it could continue in that fashion. If, if the jewelry store left and the pawnbroker left, a new jewelry store and pawnbroker could come back in, or it could convert back to a retail establishment, whether that's selling clothes, shoes, whatever type of retail use.
Well, so the applicant has said that there will be limits. There, there are limits on what they can loan on, loans on. And honestly, I, I, they seem to be honorable business people. And yet they could at any time switch their list of what they make loans on to other merchandise other than jewelry?
Well, if you approve it based on their plan of operation, that's what it would be limited to. If they switched it, obviously we would have to take enforcement action and go through that sort of process. They also are required to get a license to operate a pawn operation in the city. And they'd have to submit those documents. So the special land use permit is for the use that's being presented to you.
For the use as a jewelry store and pawnbroker?
And pawnbroker with the operational plan that I believe is dated May 26, 2020.
So in that operational plan specifies jewelry and if they wanted to make loans on anything else, they would have to resubmit a site plan for approval?
That's correct. Resubmit for special land use change.
Right. Special land use. Sorry. Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Binky?
I, I have two questions for the petitioners. My first question is, in your other two locations, do you have any of these setback issues that you had to get variances for in either Southfield or Detroit with regard to schools or parks or churches, et cetera, that we have in ours?
I can answer at least on one. In the city of Detroit, they're in downtown Detroit. I don't believe there were any requirements. They've been in that location or nearby for 97 years. So I don't believe there were there. I'm not certain about Southfield. I was not involved in that particular matter. They are in a area that is, I remember from looking at the map and maybe Mr. LeBret can comment on it, but they have some businesses nearby and I would say that within 300 to 500 feet are residential homes.
Across the street.
Across, actually across the street.
Okay. And then my second question is, because if I'm understanding this correctly, the retail portion of your establishment is easy to get permission for in this location. It's the pawn brokerage that has the issue. And I'm just curious, since those other two locations are relatively close by, why not have a flagship retail store here and simply do the pawn brokerage in those other two locations without functioning here? I don't know. That's.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to let Mr. LeBret answer that also, but I would like to say this. This is in the DNA of the company. This is what they're known for. It would kind of be like opening up McDonald's and not having the Big Mac fries and a Coke. Because the, one of the reasons they're moving to Royal Oak is obviously it's a great location. It's a great place to do business. But many of their customers have migrated to this area in many in Royal Oak, Berkeley, Birmingham, the Bloomfields, Troy, and to the east. So Madison Heights. So they want to have, they need to have both functions. But I'll let, I'll let Brad extrapolate on that.
The purpose of us moving to the area that we're planning on is to offer more of a convenience factor for our clients and customers, excuse me, that are, that are in Oakland County, that are in that area. People do travel from that area to both of our locations, whichever they prefer. And we thought that it would be beneficial to them and the other residents in that area to make it more convenient for them to visit us, not have to travel so far and offer the same things that we offer them at our two existing locations. The, the other issue is our other two stores are a little bit larger than, than this one that we're proposing on now. We're trying to make it more of a boutique experience, for lack of a better term, cater to more higher-end loans, which we do do at both of our locations now. But again, this is a little more convenient for our clients that, that are living and moving to, to this area. That answers your question.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now seeing Mr. Twing, I think we're ready for the public hearing on the recorded comments.
Okay, I'll have Doug start playing those.
From the city of Royal Oak, calling about planning committee. Agenda item F6, new business, that's the Pawn Shop in the, the other place. Where I wanted the dispensary, planning to go onto Woodward Avenue. There's a little bit of concern. Obviously, the concern is parking. The concern is how close to a church it is, how close to a park it is. The concern is people that are bringing to the neighborhood, that is on a Woodward Avenue bus route. The fact that the, the dispensary or the Pawn Shop are, have been raided in the past, the Pawn Shop has in Southfield. So I find it interesting that Royal Oak is willing to bring up business into its city that has such controversy behind it. But then again, I understand the mayor is, the mayor and Ziedman's working together. Ziedman's a contributor to the mayor. And that's not surprising based on the way the mayor works. The mayor, based on emotion, didn't like what Kim Gibbs did. That's a different story. But he writes a, writes a piece about her, a hit piece on her, you know, she can't have opinions. We have opinions about the mayor that aren't as positive as he might think they are. So if the mayor's willing to allow this to happen, I suggest that the mayor put this in his part for Royal Oak. Because what a corridor is, is supposed to be a nice, clean, well-maintained corridor that Royal Oak can and, and Birmingham, the field township all around the front end. People are supposed to drive through and feel safe. It's supposed to be clean, like I said. I just don't think that's going to work out for Royal Oak positively, but you know, the mayor program's made a decision since, you know, he's lateral in this. Just see how it works and it's going to be a mess. It's going to be a nightmare for our city. And don't expect people to be happy who are in that area. Don't give out strength of the marriage and expect that that's going to be a really pretty affair. Most likely a pretty small, peaceful area. So maybe there won't be a paternity plan at all. And maybe there won't be a paternity society section, the part of the minority section. So prove it wrong. This is just out of common sense, but don't get put around this for. And obviously, it's going to happen no matter what, because what our politics looks these days. We're supporting, trying this to see this. And best of luck. You know, this, this is something that the mayor cannot hang it out on. Like, best of luck. He'll, he'll be known for this. This will be 40's, 40's folly, just like swords folly. But actually, whoever's folly worked, 40 is not going to work. So good luck. Again, this is Mark, live in Robinwood, I'll rent the neighborhood. And I definitely don't plan to live in Robinwood very much longer. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Yes, this is Cynthia Flack. My home number is 248-549-3149. I'm calling in regard to the Pawn Shop that's supposed to go, that's wanting to go up on Woodward Avenue. Case number is 200611. We do not want it. It will attract people who will infiltrate and cause trouble in the neighborhood. We don't want it. And all that information has been shown to be possible through research. So please go to the Pawn Shop. Thank you.
Hello, this is Michael Flack. I live in the 4134 South, in place of Royal Oak. I'm a member of this community since 1982 and lived in the city my whole life. I understand that you're considering a pawn shop where the, where Joe's Army Navy store is located on Woodward. And I oppose that property being used for that purpose. I think it will attract people from outside of the area of Royal Oak who would really possibly be undesirable. That's probably what I have to say on the matter. Thank you very much. Bye.
I'm Eileen Kansberg. Agenda case number SP-020-06-08. The agenda case number is 20-06.
Hi, Lee. Lee?
And it's regarding.
Hi. No, I'm on mute. Hi.
I believe it would be terrible for the neighborhood. We would attract the wrong kind of people. And I just don't think it fits in with our city of Royal Oak. Thank you. Bye.
So my name is Mindy Groves. G. The special land use site plan, SP-2006, there should be established a retail jewelry store and pawnbroker, Pawn Shop. And I want to strongly state that. Because I found one with three kids, the length of a buck, and walk the neighborhood. And my concern is bringing what is described as a dark-oriented one-shank or button coming into the neighborhood would possibly bring in some traffic that might be unwanted in a family-friendly neighborhood. There's also a elementary school straight down the street from that location. And traffic cutting through extra people in the neighborhood that might be possibly with goods they just need to sell or get quick cash.
Excuse me, Doug. Doug, I'm, I think we're struggling hearing these comments. Is there any way we could do something with the mic?
Pardon me? I stepped away.
Oh, that's okay. I, well, I'm struggling with hearing these comments. They're going in and out. It's very crackly. Is there any way we could clear it up?
We're playing with the mic a little bit. Maybe if everybody mutes themselves, might help with some feedback.
Okay.
Things like that.
Note that I oppose it. My family opposes it. Neighbors around us oppose it. That we do not want this in our neighborhood. And I appreciate any feedback that you have. If you want to give me a call back, my phone number is 248-224-8078. Thank you.
My name is Mary Beth Harrison. I'm a citizen of Royal Oak. I am calling in reference to a planning meeting agenda, F as in Fox, six or case number S as in Sam, P as in Peter, The address is 32302 Woodward. And it's in reference to site planning for a potential Pawn Shop at this location. I have some objections to this from the planning perspective. Number one, the signage is ridiculous looking. It's flashy. It is not tasteful and it looks top-heavy. The lighting that they claim they're going to have is going to be very, very bright. I don't know about you, but I'm sure not many people that live in that area will want that kind of wattage coming through their windows. It's almost going to be like they're living around a prison. It's ridiculous. But the onsite parking is going to be terrible. There's none of it. Number one, I don't know where all the employees are going to park. How many employees will there be anyway? And the other two, there's 42 of them. So I have no idea how many, but even if you have 10 working there a day, where are they all going to park? And because of this parking situation, they're going to be parking in, people are going to be parking in the neighborhood. They're going to be blocking driveways. You will park in your driveway. I can guarantee you that. And I don't want to have to deal with that kind of bologna. The curbs and abutments, where exactly?
Please.
Um, or maybe, I don't know if Tim can hear this, but I'm wondering, because there was the email ahead of this about people wanting to make potentially more comments. And I'm just wondering when the, um, the announcement to citizens about this public hearing went out to citizens? If it was way back in March? Or if it was very close to this date that they got the new instructions about this procedure? Plus, we can't hear, I think we need to be able to hear. Maybe they're busy with that.
Yes, we are. Could you give us a minute to straighten out the audio? Oh, first.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. List.
It's Mark. Yes, it's Mark. Good evening, everybody. I'm suggesting maybe to short a adjournment to give the planning department a moment to fix the audio.
Sure, that's fine.
This is Mick McGuire. I live at 4456 Arlington Street. I'm about to property at 3221 Avenue. It's been proposed that they're installing a pawn shop there. And I think pawn shop may merit interest. And I understand that you want to, uh, maybe it's such a large place that you're trying to buy on property or you're trying to put down the property behind it, the residences, residential property. I don't think this is going to bring any benefit to our neighborhood. Pawn shops have a nice location. And I'm not a class area. I think there's just going to be some to create the neighborhood. The Kelly Wilber Avenue, which is our main door for the two way. That's one of the first things that people see coming into my room from the public side. I also understand that they basically wouldn't understand the, uh, some of these pawn shops and events. Some sort of a.
This is still bad.
I don't know what else I can do, ma'am. This is where.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure, but these are pawn shops. I'd like to know this is a.
Let this one finish.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, this is Doug. I'm really out of options to try to get these to where you can hear better. The audio quality on each one fluctuates depending on the quality of the telephone the person used when they called then. Most through fine on Tim's speaker. So there may also be an issue with everyone's speaker on their computer. Uh, but there's not much else I can do on this end, uh, to adjust the sound quality at this point.
Okay, so my question, uh, two things. One, do we have a record of these 23? Are they all opposed to this pawn shop?
Yes.
Okay, and so in addition to the 23, we have 53, 54 letters that are opposed to the pawn shop. So my question's going to be for Mark List. Can we at least put on the record for the public hearing that we have 77 opposed to the pawn shop? Because we can't sit here all night trying to listen to these. I, it's just not going to work.
I think that's an option, but I, um, at this point, uh, you know, uh, under, under normal circumstances, people would have the right to be heard and by the, uh, directly. My suggestion at this point would be to continue the public hearing and adjourn the, adjourn the public hearing until such time as the audio can be provided to each commissioner individually or may, or transcript, which is, transcripts are really hard to put together. But perhaps, uh, an audio file that could be also shared, uh, online on the city website. I'm just concerned that, uh, under the Open Meetings Act, and I know there are some exceptions to, uh, the normal circumstances under the governor's executive order. But I'm concerned that people have the right to be heard and not just that they're objecting.
Well, I would certainly agree with that, but we can't hear them. So I don't know what choice we have. Um, so I guess I'm going to defer to you as a legal.
Mark, Mark, is it, I mean, I can, I can have Doug email all 23 voice messages to each individual planning commission member, and they can listen to it on their own computer.
That, that's an option. I know our system will allow us to pull off voicemails and email them.
Doug, just take them, take all 23 of them and email them to each planning commission member.
And then when would they be listening to these?
You can listen to them right now.
Uh, okay.
Uh, adjourn the meeting for, what, about a half hour for everybody to listen to the audios? And come back. Tim, is that what you're thinking?
Well, I don't know that you want to adjourn the meeting, that they can listen to them on their own. But I, I, number one, I want to attempt to send them to them, make sure that that happens and they get them. Um, so if Doug could take one and take, take a 20 set and send it to Anne, if she gets it, can play it on her own computer, whatever that row.
I'm concerned that the people, when they're making, it's a public hearing and they have the right to have their input before the planning commission makes its decision.
Well, that's fine. They'll each, they'll each hear it.
Well, I, okay. I understand what you're saying, but what if, what if? So we're just going to pull, take a break and all go, go through all of these? I mean, we're talking another hour just to potentially try to hear these. Is it possible to transcribe these in a letter form? Or, or send them to us and then postpone this, this meet, this, um, site plan and special land use to, to, to the next month? I mean, this could take quite a long time tonight.
You've got a question from Mr. Cohen, uh, Madam Chair.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, Mr. Cohen.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I recognize the difficulty here. And perhaps, and we certainly want everyone to be heard. We've been able to be heard and we certainly want all those who took the time to call you to be heard. And we will be able to then respond. However, I would like to make this small suggestion because of this technical difficulty. However, we do this, I think we would like to request that, could we have a special meeting in a couple of weeks? We'll be willing to pay for it. Because you will then have the record of the meeting, which I think is important. You have the record of the meeting up to this point, all the written comments that people have sent in, and then the 23 calls. And I think Mr. List would agree with me, that would be the record of the meeting upon which then the planning commission would make a decision. And we think what would be fair to, to us, because we prepared and you prepared, if you have all that information, then we could have a special meeting and we could have, um, action taken on this. Of course, we won't be able to go to the zoning board on Thursday because we need your special land use approval, I believe, as Mr. Twing has pointed out. So we would be postponed on zoning till July, but we would like to know where we're headed. I think that's fair. Um, and I, we say this with a great modicum of respect for everyone involved. We realize the technical difficulties. So if we, if you got the information, we had a special meeting in a couple of weeks and then we could, uh, then we have a record of the meeting and the public hearing that is closed, and then we move forward with action. And then if you approve the special land use, then we would move to the zoning board meeting in July. I think that's accurate.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Twing?
That's fine with me if it's, if it, if it's fine with the legal department on, on the record. Um, we would not take any new phone calls. We would not take any new emails.
Okay.
It, it's simply what we have on file. If we can send them out, uh, in both fashions, we will. I don't know that I have someone to transcribe, uh, these messages, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay, so if they can't be transcribed, then we'll at least have the F2 to listen to them before the next meeting. Okay?
And I'm not sure how we're going to conduct the next meeting at this point. But if the technology, which I don't have any control over, um, doesn't work any better, uh, we may be in the same boat at future meetings. Uh, the only good thing I will say with the rest of the agenda, we didn't get any other phone calls on it.
Does the planning commissioner, Ms. Beaky?
So I just wanted to ask this question again, because again, we're in a kind of a, we're in a transition from our February meeting till now in terms of, uh, how we receive comments. Since this is the first time we've adjourned as a planning commission. And so I wanted to ask the clarifying question, Tim. When did the announcements go out to the public about this particular topic? I know it goes out in the mail. Was it way back in February for a March meeting? Or was this something recent? And did people have clarity on, on the new procedure? Because I know, again, for the average citizen, they participate when something is very close to their heart and home. And so just to make sure for transparency and citizen participation purposes, we're not leaving people out if they had concerns. And we did receive a fair amount, but this might have even generated more concern. And so I wouldn't want to short circuit the, um, public hearing portion, given the fact, again, we're in a very unusual circumstance. So when did those notifications go out to the neighbors and such as they do?
They went out pursuant to scheduling this meeting. So they would have gone out, uh, in, in the paper, uh, 15 days before the meeting pursuant to the statute. Uh, they would have gone out to the property owners within 300 feet in that same time period, uh, prior to this meeting. Uh, the beginning part of your agenda is part of that notice that was sent out. It says, "Public comment will be taken in a couple of different fashions." It indicates a phone number to call between, uh, the hours of 12 and 3 on Monday, June 8. Uh, those were the, where the messages that you're trying to listen to came in. We also said we would take email, email messages and gave them the contact email for the planning office. And those were taken, uh, from when the notice went out up until Monday, June 8 at 12 in order to give us time to post them to the agenda.
I know that makes a lot of sense. I just wondered if this was because of the big gap in time, if this had been a meet, something that was going to be way back in February or maybe March or April, or it wasn't.
No, the notice was given pursuant to what we had to do.
Thank you, thank you.
Specifically, these went out the week before Memorial Day.
Any other comments from any other commissioners? What's the pleasure of the commission? Ms. Douglas?
Well, I will say the next two items we have on the agenda, uh, or the next items are, I mean, it's, it's not, I don't think we have applicants in front of us or commenters, um, or, or, or do we? I'm sorry, Mr. Twing, anybody lined up, um, to comment on, uh?
One.
No, no, the only, the only phone calls that you've received this evening, which we're having a problem, uh, playing, are received in this particular case. All the rest, uh, we either received, but received by email. So item seven, uh, there are some comments regarding item seven and eight that were attached to the agenda. So you have those.
Okay, but so it's not like there's an urgent need to address seven and eight tonight. I mean, we could adjourn our meeting tonight, um, wait to get emails of the, all of the recordings and listen to them and either, uh, and then the question becomes, do we, uh, hold a special meeting? Or do we just table this until July?
I don't see any reason to wait on seven and eight. You could deal with those tonight and just table this item.
Ah, okay. All right. Yeah, you're right. That makes sense.
I would agree with that.
So I would, I would suggest you make a motion to postpone it. But I would also ask you to pick a meeting date so that we can get that established if we're going to do a special meeting.
Um, I guess I would ask the petitioner, is there something urgent or, or timely that, that creates a need for a special meeting? Given that you're going to miss the zoning board, um, day after tomorrow, and the next zoning board meeting will be after our July meeting?
Well, if, if I could, um, it would be helpful if we knew where we were headed, um, and it would be important to us and help us prepare for the zoning board meeting. We did anticipate to have a, a decision today and we totally understand that, but I think it's not.
Dennis, can I jump in?
Sure.
The, the zoning board meeting in July is the ninth. It is before the planning commission meeting, which would be on.
Oh, so then we do need, yeah, that, well, thank you for pointing that out. That we, we absolutely do need to have your, uh, we, we, we need to have your approval in a special meeting in order to make the July meeting.
I'm sorry, the planning commission meeting is the 14th and the zoning board is the ninth.
Yeah, so if we, so, yeah, so if, if, we, we would, we would have, we would have to go to, if we waited until July for your planning commission meeting, we would then be pushed off to August. So I would, I would ask with, with, uh, uh, that we would, you would be able to have a special meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, maybe three, you know, so that we can know that we're going to the zoning board meeting, uh, on the 9th of July. I think that's a fair request.
Mr. Twing, if the planning commission decides to, to, uh, schedule a special meeting, are there dates that we need to stay away from in the next three weeks?
Uh, let's see. Uh, the 16th, next Tuesday looks open. Uh, the 23rd looks open. And the 30th looks open. As far as staying on Tuesday nights.
Okay.
And since, since we're not going to renotice this, we're only going to notice the meeting. Any of those dates would work.
Is there a motion from the commission on, um, how to handle this special land use and site plan request this evening? Ms. Douglas?
Well, can we do a straw poll here as to people's availability on, um, uh, starting with June 16th? Anybody not available? Not hearing anything, so I am going to move that we postpone this item until a special meeting can be, uh, held on Tuesday, June 16th.
Support.
At 7 o'clock?
At 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Douglas, support by Mr. Clooster to postpone this, uh, item six public hearing to June 16th at 7 o'clock. At which time the planning department can, um, forward the transcribed 23 comments or the voice messages, um, to the planning commission so we could review those. Is there any more discussion?
Is there a support on the motion?
Yep.
Eric Clooster.
Motion by Douglas, uh, support by Clooster. Ms. Beaky?
I just want to comment that, that the, the reason we're doing a special meeting is because of technological difficulties under, you know, unusual circumstances. Um, because I think we don't, we usually just move it to the next meeting. And so that's the reason why we're doing it this way.
Thank you, Ms. Beaky. Any other discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any more hands. I'm going to call for the roll call vote. And Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Guntina?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Clooster?
Yes.
Ms. Beaky?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, um, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Krieger, your, your meeting's been moved to next week at 7:00 PM.
I want to thank everyone very much. These are extraordinary times and you've taken extraordinary action and we're very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your patience.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hedges and Mr. Twing for, uh, helping us through that. And also, Mr. List, appreciate it.
Yes, thanks very much.
Okay, so, um, we're going to move on now to the item seven, which is also a public hearing. It's for rezoning, um, from general industrial to mixed-use overlay district of, uh, well, I'm going to let Mr. Twing. There's a bunch of addresses, so I'll pass it on to you, Mr. Twing.
Certainly. Uh, you may recall that this item was, uh, initiated really, uh, by the city, uh, and planning commission to rezone, uh, several properties that are currently general industrial, uh, to, uh, one family residential and run family residential. There's a small one piece, it's one family, uh, two mixed-use, one overlay district. The primary reason identified behind that, uh, reason was the current draft of the amendments to the Texas zoning ordinance allow various types of recreational marijuana facilities in general industrial. As, and the discussion was, uh, this was not an area where you wanted to have those contemplated as, uh, potential uses in the future, uh, as well as the fact that the master plan identifies this area as mixed-use, under the current master plan. Uh, so we have noticed and provided the property owners with, uh, notice of that potential rezoning. Uh, and this is a planning commission recommendation to the city commission, uh, as a map amendment. The second part of this really relates to item eight, which is a separate public hearing on it. We can get into that, but the two are tied together. Item eight was some tax amendments to treat any of the current industrial uses that are in this area under an overlay district, so they would not be treated as non-conforming uses. The city has done a similar overlay district north of downtown and surrounding downtown when several properties in that area were rezoned from multi-family and commercial to one family and created an overlay district to not burden those existing, uh, properties with non-conforming status. Meaning that they could continue to operate without that, continue to change use, continue to do certain types of, of, um, improvements and renovations on it. So the two, seven and eight are, are tied together, um, in concept. One is a map amendment and the second one is a zoning tax ordinance amendment, uh, to address the same area. I don't really have a, a lot to add to the, uh, map amendment. Uh, if there's questions, uh, be happy to get into that.
Uh, Mayor?
Tim, just a quick question. I mean, I understand, you know, the general direction of, of what's motivating us to, you know, we, we see in our master plan, the future of this area becoming, you know, naturally on its own before we made any changes, moving more to other uses. Um, what happens to the existing properties, um, that are under this that get changed, um, if they sell their property? So do those uses continue to permit? Or do all of a sudden they're prohibited from selling their business or their property for the purposes that are, um, allowed today?
Well, if, if the zoning map goes forward, um, as it is proposed and it's rezoned to mixed-use one and, and also the accompanying tax amendment is also adopted to treat it as an overlay district, they would be able to sell, they would be able to, those currently established, existing industrial uses would continue as if, um, they were still in an industrial district. They would not be treated as a non-conforming use where any work or changes would, would run afoul of that. Uh, they would still get a letter from the city if they were remortgaging or had to sell and someone had needed a mortgage on it or lending. We would give them the city saying it was in compliance with zoning ordinance requirements. So the overlay district takes that non-conforming issue away. So they're in tandem between the, the zoning map change and the text change. Now, if they wanted to do a use other than what's currently there that needed additional approval, i.e. if it's a permitted use now and what they wanted to do in the future, let's say it's sold and changed hands. If the new owner wanted to do something that required special land use approval, they couldn't do it. That's not what the overlay district would allow.
So, so with the overlay, we're essentially saying, hey, look, you can do what you are doing today. You're going to be conforming because, you know, we're, we're not, we're not just changing the type and then every time you want to put up a shed or change a facade, you know, or do something like that, um, that you could still work under the existing conditions today. Uh, and if you were to sell the business or operation there, um, you know, to be fair to these property owners, if they want to, I mean, sell their business and someone wants to take it on and operate it as it is today, that's not an issue. Um, but if they were and someone were to buy the property and say, hey, I want to put a, you know, mixed-use development here, okay, great, we have it zoned that way and that's not a problem.
That's correct. That's correct.
But it's not handcuffing. I guess what I'm, I, I don't want to take a whole bunch of property owners going from Lincoln all the way down that are existing today and surprise them and all of a sudden, you know, basically say, well, you can continue operating today until you sell the business or, or it changes hands and then, you know, you have to sell it to someone that wants to do a mixed-use development. Because what happens if there's a storage company there, there's some other stuff there? Um, you know, it, that's not, that, that wouldn't be prohibited under these layered actions, correct? So someone could go and buy it, operate it as today with the overlay and it would be fine.
That's correct. They would, if, if both passed, they would be able to continue to operate it. They would even be able to change the current operation to a similar operation under the industrial. So it wouldn't necessarily have to stay exactly, uh, what it is. But if it's in terms of like a permitted use, um, so there are some opportunities to a new owner to, to even change it to a different type of permitted general use. But I, I, I won't get into that. What they couldn't do would bring it in and change it to a special land use or, or substantial type changes, so.
Well, they would, if they did, they'd have to come to the city commission to do, uh, some sort of.
Well, they, they obviously could do a use variance or apply for whatever steps they needed to.
So what would the, I mean, if, if you're a property owner in this area, what would the concerns be for the property owners currently here in this area?
Uh, well, you do have some letters from a couple of them and they've expressed what their concerns are. Um, uh, they're attached and part of, uh, the report. Um, from a staff standpoint, I believe we've, if you adopt both, you would alleviate the normal, uh, concern with a rezoning by creating an overlay district that said you can continue. It would preclude them from just simply applying for a special land use permit. They would have to go through some extra hoops to try and have that happen. So it is a little more restrictive, but. I guess that would be the only objection I could see.
Mr. Klooster?
So just to clarify, the overlay district allows the current property owners to maintain any by right uses that are in the current zoning district?
I wouldn't say any, because generally what we do is determine that a particular permitted use, there may be another permitted use that's similar, has the same parking requirements, has the same other general standards. So if, if they fall within that kind of category, yeah, you could alter it. But if there are different requirements that may come into play, there may be some permitted uses that you couldn't switch to.
Okay.
Mr. Casado, and then Ms. Douglas.
All right, I, I did read the attached letters. It was striking that the two, to me anyways, that the two largest landowners who seem to be successful where they're at were expressing a lot of fears about the overlay district not addressing all their concerns about the restrictions. I guess I, I didn't quite understand all of them. I don't know if they were correct. If, if the storage place wanted to put another story on, or GFL wanted to build an outbuilding, or something like that, are these sorts of things restricted? What, can you give us some feedback on, on some of the fears they expressed? That they wouldn't be able to enhance their operations?
Well, it's kind of hard to always speculate on what their concerns are. I mean, the buildings already have a height limitation under general business. They, they couldn't add on to them under, under that as anyways. So in terms of height, terms of some of those criteria, they're limited by the current general industrial zoning anyways. In, in terms of parking, too. I'd almost have to know what new use they wanted to do or their new development that they wanted to do to answer the question of what would the impact be. There may be none. And on the other hand, there may be some. But as, as I said, I think the biggest one with the overlay is that it establishes what you have is okay. It indicates that if it burns down, is destroyed, whatever, you can put it back. It defines what a substantial improvement might be and what's allowed, so it sets those parameters. Basically, what it prohibits is special land uses that are in the general industrial at the current time. So it's a, a use restriction without putting a zoning change burden on what was previously there, and I'll refer that back to all the negatives that come from being considered a non-conforming use.
Ms. Beiki?
I thought Sher was waiting, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sher. Sorry, Sher.
A problem. If one of these currently zoned industrial properties sold to a mixed-use use, could the property subsequently go back to general industrial? Or once it's mixed-use, it's going to stay there?
Well, once it, once it becomes a conforming use under the, over, under the zoning, it, it can't go back to a general industrial use. So if, if the industrial use property owner sold, and they actually developed it with a mixed use, you wouldn't be able to take it back to industrial without going through the appropriate approvals, variances, rezonings, whatever. It's only, the overlay is only allowing it to continue in its current operation without non-conforming burden, and also letting you maintain it and doing some repairs to it and those sorts of things. But if you take it out of the industrial use, there's no right to put it back to an industrial use.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Okay, now Ms. Beiki.
That, that, that question might kind of get at what, what I'm trying to understand, too, because if I'm understanding correctly, then the, the progression of moving towards mixed use is kind of set in motion by this overlay district. But I guess the question I was going to pose, thinking back on why this had come up in the first place, if I'm understanding correctly, was the issue of not having anything to do with the marijuana businesses close to downtown. Is that correct? This is where this, am I remembering that correctly? That's where we got started on this rezoning about these particular businesses. Is that right?
That was one of the primary reasons that it was brought to the discussion table.
Right, because, because what I was, when I read the comments from the businesses and read this again, again, you know, reflecting back on what we had discussed before, I mean, would it be easier to simply say that there's no permitted marijuana use within a certain, you know, distance from downtown? Rather than rezoning this, but maybe to the point of putting it in motion of a, of a higher level use? This is useful, because again, we are trying to prevent an unintended consequence in terms of marijuana businesses by rezoning, but then these businesses bring up different kind of unintended consequences that they've experienced in other places. Anyway, so that's my question with, is there, is there a different way to address the, the issue of the marijuana being too close to downtown potentially? And whether that'd be even worth discussing, I don't know, but I just wanted to mention it.
Well, I, I, I guess from my standpoint, there's 100 different ways to address zoning ordinance and zoning ordinance provisions. The zoning ordinance provisions that have been discussed by the planning commission and referred to the city commission don't include a distance from the CBD, or a distance from the downtown, or even a distance from residential zoning. They simply limit the uses under recreational marijuana to general business and to general industrial, and have a distance between themselves or the licensed establishments and between schools. If the planning commission wanted to go back and amend what's already been reviewed and approved, or not approved, but sent up to the commission for action, you'd have to go back and rehear those amendments and change that wording. And it may have unintended consequences as well when you go back and look at that. I, I think what the planning commission was looking at was, and this isn't the only area that you've already rezoned. You rezoned a couple of general business properties that were on North Main to keep those from potentially being recreational marijuana or facility locations as well. So I guess to answer your question, yes, you could go back and write some other provisions, but I'm not sure that you're going to make a perfect scenario. This one works.
I, I guess I was just thinking, getting in, given the business concerns, if there is another way, that would be relatively easy, but maybe there isn't. Like a five-year prohibition of marijuana businesses there, and then you kind of revisit. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to go back if it's not, if this seems appropriate. The business's concerns seem pretty big. Could they, can they buy the, the contiguous land? That was another big question that they had seemed, that they've been gradually expanding and, and under this kind of zoning overlay, they're concerned they wouldn't be able to continue to like have the contiguous properties potentially in the future, as they've done in the past.
Well, they, they couldn't expand an industrial use that already isn't considered an industrial use. So it's very limited.
Ms. Beiki, so your question was, can they continue to purchase property and it's, if, if this were to be approved, can they purchase property adjacent to them that has already been rezoned mixed-use to expand their current business model?
Correct.
Okay.
From their letters, I understood that they're saying that that would be one of their concerns, is that in the past, that's what they've done and redeveloped spaces. And so, again, I'm just trying to think, again, if our purpose is really to prohibit marijuana being close to downtown, you know, and their concern is about not being able to continue to function well and redo their business. Again, I'm just trying to understand, is there another way to balance those two concerns without them being upset? But again, I, I don't, I don't have a specific answer. That's just what I see is two different. It seems like they're good businesses, and it would be a shame to upset them if they're not planning to open pot shops.
Ms. Douglas, shade your hand up?
Yeah, I, we all remember things differently. I don't necessarily remember the discussion being centered around avoiding marijuana-related businesses this close to downtown. I remember the discussion being more about making the uses here consistent with the trends that we're seeing in this area. We've seen multifamily come in, and it's able to operate in the mixed-use zones. Really, it's surrounded by mixed use, and, and I recall the, the purpose here just making this area more friendly to those types of... Also acknowledging that industry in general, I mean, industrial uses as America changes are declining, and you're more likely to get offices or commercial uses in here as opposed to industrial. So I see this as, as a move towards just a, a more sensible approach or land use plan for this area.
Any other comments?
This is the mayor. Sorry, I lost my bandwidth here, so I took a walk.
Mayor?
So the, the question that I have is, okay, I get that, what Commissioner Douglas said, but, you know, at the same time, all the other areas in that vicinity, all the new projects that we've seen inherently have come from people asking us to change when they have a, a project, right? So we're seeing, you know, quite the opposite of what we, what people would, you know, we, we see residential and other uses encroaching on industrial, which is a good thing. I think that natural progression will occur and has occurred, and, you know, eventually this area that we see here in, you know, 20 years, 50 years, whatever it is, will go away on its own, and it will be, you know, the values in residential, not industrial. And so I guess my, my question would be is, it seems like there is risk, and there are property rights of the existing owners, and maybe we're preempting, you know, other creativity we don't even know about for this area, when, you know, we've seen in our town at least a natural progression of the shrinking of the general industrial anyways. So just, I, I mean, I always want to be, whenever you take an action, there's always some other reaction, something unintended consequences. What we've seen over the decades is that this area has just on its own, you know, made this metamorphosis. Just a thought.
Any other comments? So, Mr. Twing, then, we've acknowledged that there are two pieces of, two letters that were sent that are attached to this. That's part of the public hearing. Do, do we need to say anything else about those?
No, just now that you've received them and they're there and...
Okay, thank you.
It's just like you've done on the prior cases.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Douglas?
Mr. Twing, are there any recommendations in those, in those two letters that make sense and that you think should be added to the text once we get around to amending it? I mean, the one, one of the ones that I see is not requiring them to pay application fees if they do need a special land use for modifications.
Well, you know, I, I I don't know why that would be the case. The, the fee is really established to pay the, pay for the public notices that we have to send out and the reports that we're going to do. And if they don't do anything, there's no cost to them. So it would only become relevant at the point they chose to do something. And that's true whether this ordinance, amendments pass or doesn't pass. They'd have to pay the same fee. So I don't know why paying, why they would be, you know, why we would let them get away with doing something for free that is not being impacted.
So if, I'll, I'll use the, the storage business as an example. If they needed to, you know, rebuild the wall or something or do some work, does that require a special land use? Or is that just handled by right?
Well, they're not, they're not changing the use, and they're simply renovating the space, or they're reconfiguring the storage units. As long as they're not increasing the number of storage units or changing the footprint of the building, it would be dealt with administratively, only at the point, and that's true under either scenario. There's, you know... So I, I'm not sure why there would be a, a need to waive fees. That would simply just place the, the burden of paying those fees or costs onto the other taxpayers in the city. The, the cost doesn't go away. I didn't really see anything. There was a couple minor comments that they had that I might, in terms of material modification. I don't know that the limitation they talked about was a problem or, or not yet in terms of defining it. I would not put any time limits in regarding the number of days, because I, I never know how long a particular review of a body is going to take. And that just seems to put the city in the position of saying, okay, in 60 days, we have to take action. So if we're not happy with it, we're just going to deny it, rather than actually working it through. It might take longer than that. So I, I'm not, I'm not sure there's too much in here that I can suggest that I would add to it. There may be some words missing in the text that we have that could happen, but I mean, it, the, the model that we used for the overlay district was very similar to what was used, as I said before, in the one-family overlay district. And that was drafted by a legal counsel, outside legal counsel, a gentleman named Jerry Fisher, which is a fairly renowned land use attorney. So we didn't, we didn't really pull this from scratch. It was modeled after some fairly decent language.
Got a quick one.
Mr. Guntina?
So I'm going to kind of ask the same question that Commissioner Douglas did, but sort of in the reverse. Is there anything in the overlay district zoning that could potentially cause a special use, special land use need that under the general industrial zoning would not require? So, you know, basically, if they, if they were expanding their business, continuing the same type of operation, is, does the overlay district suddenly cause that, put them in a situation where they need a special land use approval? Whereas if it was still general industrial and did the same thing, it wouldn't necessarily require that of them?
No, I mean, it doesn't change. The general industrial, this zoning district doesn't change right now. If, if you're a permitted use right now, you're a permitted use under the overlay. If you're a special land use right now, you're a special land use under the overlay. There's nothing in the district that's going to force them to change. It would only be their own actions that would force some future review or commentary. And that's true under the current zoning. If, if you're a special land use now, and you want to change to a different special land use, you're going to have to go through that approval now. If you left it zoned the way it is and you wanted to establish a recreational marijuana shop, you're going to have to go through that process now if it gets adopted. The only thing the overlay does would be preclude special land use applications that are special land uses. Special land use applications that are special land uses in the industrial. And that's basically where it takes out. Many of the more. Impactful type uses. You know, that are already in the general industrial. The one that's potentially going to be added to that is the grow facilities and processing facilities under recreational marijuana.
Any other comments? Mr. Casada?
Just a quick question, just history. And I remember that we rezoned at the north end, like Main and 11 Mile. I do remember that, but I don't remember anybody squawking about it. How, how common is it to, for the city to initiate a rezoning over the objectives of the land?
Um, well. I don't know that it's. I would say it's common. Generally, when we've done rezonings, it's as part of a. A review that might take in a bigger area like we're taking in here. The regional business district on the south end of Main Street was a city initiated rezoning. Frankly, the entire 2001 zoning map was a city initiated rezoning of the entire city. Generally, you're looking at broader areas and as, as Commissioner Douglas indicated. You're looking at it from a standpoint of has the area changed or is it changing? And in order to address the master plan, are you going to make changes to it? One of the ones that we were talking about. A couple of years ago was also up on Coolidge. And I believe we changed some of the industrial property up there to commercial. But I'd have to go back and look, but it's, it's not common for the city to initiate it, but it's not unheard of either.
Okay, well, the other element of it is over the property owners objections is the thing. I assume when you did these larger areas, which is before my time, the public was involved and was public comment, whatever. Here, it's a much smaller area. It's only a small number of properties and the two biggest ones don't, don't want it to happen. Cause at least what they're expressing to us is they think it's going to detrimentally affect their financial interests. So that does bother me, to tell you the truth. On the other hand, I don't know if, you know, maybe they're planning on selling to a, to some marijuana business and, you know, we don't think that's a good land use. But we, I don't know that that's in the offing here. But I'm expressing my, my discomfort with. Doing this against, you know, over their objections when obviously they didn't ask for it and it's a limited area.
Ms. Bickie?
I don't know. I mean, given that these two companies have so much of the area. And again, I'm not opposed to getting moving to this other zone, but I feel like we, I mean, I'm not sure why none of them came today. But I feel like a simple discussion maybe would help clarify some of this. Cause it, it does seem, it's interesting that they have such strong objectives, objections. And then they, and they have two longstanding businesses. I don't, I don't know.
Well, let me, let me be clear. They have submitted letters. So they have provided you with public comment. They weren't invited as petitioners because they're not the petitioners. The city is, the planning commission initiated this request and directed staff to do so. So they were not invited participants in the meeting as petitioners because they're not petitioners.
And just one comment on that. I think for future reference, I think under the, again, if I'm not mistaken, the council manager form, we as a planning commission should be recommending to the city commission that they ask the planning department to do this rather than us or go through the city manager. Just because maybe we, we kind of short circuited the process as far as us referring to the commission. No?
That's incorrect. You can recommend, you have the action to suggest changes. They can also come from the city commission to the planning commission, to staff. So no, we, this was brought forth as a discussion item when the marijuana items were going forward. And it was identified as one of the areas that the planning commission and I believe some members of the city commission were concerned about whether or not. You wanted to allow recreational marijuana in this area. And if you do potentially allow those petitions and fines, this is not a staff generated. Request. So let me, let me throw that out there.
That's why, again, that's why I go back to the point again. Either A have a, as a planning commission, hear from these two, invite them to talk to us since they own the majority of the land in that zone. Cause I understand it's mostly affecting them because the other businesses that are currently there, Roke, et cetera. They comply with mixed use overlay. They, they would, because they're the future types of businesses we're looking at and what that mixed use pertains to more. Is that, isn't that right? These two are the ones that are more affected directly.
Well, you do have a list of what's in the overlay district, but if you want to invite them to discuss it with you directly, then. I would suggest you postpone both items and we'll invite them to another meeting.
Again, I'm expressing that to the other commissioners, like whether. I'm not trying to create unneeded steps. I'm just wondering.
Mr. Casada?
Well, just to respond to that, I think the letters are pretty strong that they have a lot of fears about their own financial interest being affected. And I think the question is, well, let me, let me speak to the first issue. And yeah, we're, we're land, we're supposed to address land use and we can make our recommendations. If we think as a planning commission that the cost to, you know, the value of our, of our, of our zoning ordinance. Is going to be negatively affected by marijuana use in this area. The potential for that, which there isn't there now, the potential for that is a significant detriment. Then it may be worth it to rezone over these landowners objections. So the intensity of our feeling about that does, does matter. I mean, if this was a, this was a goal that we were driving for very, you know, with a lot of energy that we don't want marijuana in this area. Well, then we probably, probably want to make that recommendation. I'm hesitant. I'm not sure there's really, I'm not sure balancing those two things. Is, comes down in favor of, of, of changing the zoning when these two significant landowners in this area are so opposed to it. Now, we certainly could meet with them and maybe they misunderstand the extent of the impact. Maybe they're overstating it. You know, everybody does that. They, you know, they, nobody likes change, right? Is it, is it really that significant? It's something that maybe needs to be explored. Maybe their, their fears can be allayed. Maybe there can be some adjustments to the ordinance so their, their fears can be, it can be minimized. So I, I'm not, I'm not, I think that might be a good idea to have a discussion with them and maybe everybody can get on the same page.
Mr. Gantino?
I would agree with that as well, given that these are the two largest landowners in the area that we're discussing. They've both expressed some pretty obvious concerns and also seemed to indicate that they were caught a little off guard with the potential rezoning. I think Mr. Casada makes a good point in the sense that it's possible that there's just a lot, that there may be misunderstanding or don't understand. Considering that it doesn't seem like they, they had enough time to fully digest the ramifications. I think meeting with them to make, to discuss their concerns, perhaps that would give us as a planning commission a better standing of some potential unintended consequences. That as not being the business owners and operators there, we maybe wouldn't understand. So I would be in support of meeting with landowners to discuss their concerns before taking any action.
Anyone else?
I concur. This is the mayor.
Okay, I concur also. I think this is, I, I know for me personally, I'd like a little bit more time to, to research and read through this and go through this and take some time on this. I don't know that we need to be in a rush to make an important decision, especially one that affects two big landowners in this area. That's my opinion. Is there, do we need a motion, Tim, to, to take some action?
Well, if you, if you want to postpone them to next month, I would suggest you postpone them, do, take, make that motion. And if you want staff to invite the two landowners that, that expressed concerns in the writing. To be part of the meeting, we would make sure that they are, whether it's a virtual meeting or a in-person meeting. I don't know how that's, that meeting is going to function yet, but we would invite them to the July regular meeting. To be, to be able to participate verbally. The only other thing that I would point out is that the city commission has a deadline of August, something to pass. And move the marijuana provisions forward that have already been set up. Now that obviously could be extended. If it's not extended and they do have a licensing ordinance and a. Zoning ordinance in place before this amendment occurs. There is the potential you will get marijuana facility applications in this location prior to you rezoning it.
Sounds like we have just enough time.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to, what do I do? Table item seven and eight till the July meeting. And put in a quest for the department to invite. The two landowners that are GFL and the storage facility. I think they just changed donors, so they have a new name. That'd be the motion.
Mr. I'm sorry, the correct word is postpone, not tabled.
Okay, sorry. I meant my motion to, right, I restate my motion to postpone further discussion on item seven and eight. For the July meeting and seek to invite two subject landowners to the meeting.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gantino for some discussion on this postponement.
I just have one quick, sorry, one question. Thank you. So I understand, I, I support this and I understand that all of the listed businesses have seen this zoning, right, Tim?
Yes, they all got noticed.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Tim, for clarification, I am terribly apologetic. Mr. Casada's motion was for seven and eight. Eight is a separate public hearing. Did, were okay combining these items?
I don't have a problem combining them because they're, they're, they are totally related. Even, even the rezoning motion was to rezone it to a mixed use one overlay district. And in order, in order to have a mixed use one overlay district, you would also have to have the text adopted. So I don't, I don't have any issue with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion then? I'm not seeing, I'm going to have to call for a roll call vote. Ms. Bickie?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mr. Gantino? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, mayor?
Yes.
And Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we are postponing seven and eight till July. And then we've got item nine, which is another public hearing, Mr. Twing?
Item nine is simply the city's capital improvements program for the fiscal year. Technically, the planning commission is supposed to review and take action on this. Given the budget schedule, we really wanted to have this in front of you in March, but we're really providing it for your information. If you do have any comments on the capital improvement program, that's fine. There is a resolution there that suggested by staff, if you're comfortable with the capital improvements program for the years. 2021 in particular fiscal year going forward. I believe the city commission has already seen this document as well.
Thank you, Mr. Twing. Any questions for Mr. Twing? Ms. Bickie?
Um, here, the director of finance had suggested that for the next round of capital improvement, that perhaps we become more involved upfront. And I'm just wanting to acknowledge and maybe suggest that in a near future meeting, we, we set some dates for that. In, in, because the city knows the budget calendar and so maybe we can be on our agenda more in advance so that there's not that gap. And then I had the question, which is getting very late, so maybe I'll just. Yeah, let me just leave it at that for now. I have other questions, but I'll leave it, but because I, I do think it would be beneficial that we become more involved in the discussion. And I'd be interested in knowing in future discussions, how the programs and the, the funding are prioritized? What's the methodologies? And I know the documents were there in terms of how staff gives input onto what they think the capital improvement should be. And then the other question I would have, and I'd be interested in hearing at some point. Is, is how this interfaces with the operation budget and how Royal Oak goes about its multi-year budgeting? Cause I, I'm concerned that we're still in an annual budget mode here and we haven't gone into. More year budgeting, which really has a big relationship to capital improvement. And so I just want to state that for the record, I look forward to learning more about some of the intricacies of how these decisions are made.
Thank you, Ms. Bickie. Is, are there any other questions for Mr. Twing? And if not, is there a motion to follow the suggested resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Klooster. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Ms. Bickie. Any discussion on this? Hey, not seeing, I'm going to call for a roll call vote. Ms. Bickie?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Mr. Gantino?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, on to G, other business. Mr. Twing, you mentioned this was going to be, they've asked for a postponement?
Yep, they have. And if the planning commission wants to postpone this to July's meeting, that would be fine.
You need a motion for that?
Please, yes.
Is there a motion to postpone this till July?
I'm, I, I make a motion to propose item G, number one to July.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Casada. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, not seeing a roll call vote. Mr. Gantino?
Yes.
Mr. Casada?
Yes.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Klooster?
Yes.
Ms. Bickie? And I'm a yes. Okay. If nothing else, Mr. Twing, we're adjourned.
Oh, yes, very good.
And thanks to everyone for their patience. This was a good, long meeting.
Okay, we'll look forward to getting those, those taped public hearings in, through our email soon.
Very good.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Night.